Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll? Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Leloi. Councilmember Talamantes. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maples.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guetta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Would you please stand, please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now please salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela. A good afternoon again to everyone here, my colleagues, the city staff, and the members of the public. Today's subject, we have two items today on the discussion calendar. One is the homeless workshop, and second, related to homelessness, of course, is the weather respite activation criteria, which Councilmember Valenzuela and Maples are bringing forward for action. We'll begin with the workshop here, and I want to just take prerogative for a moment to sort of frame the issues so that we can have a good discussion about what direction the city council wants to provide to the city manager and to the community. First of all, these issues are not new to the city of Sacramento, unfortunately, like other major cities throughout California and throughout the country. We are not starting from scratch. The city, because of its efforts over the last six-plus years, now contracts for, you've heard this for, you've heard this many times, now contracts for and funds 1,100 temporary shelter beds every single night, 1,100-plus. We have also stood up a Department of Community Response with 20-plus employees who are engaged in daily outreach on the streets of Sacramento. This workshop, and you'll hear from Councilmember Jennings, who requested this, of course, as well as all of our colleagues. The workshop format, by the way, is great. I think we all agree that we need to do more of this as a city council. We did it, in a way, last week around the audit, where there was an opportunity to have a full discussion about complex issues and not just, you know, are you for this or against that, but actually be able to dialogue amongst ourselves with the staff and with the community so that we might continue to set the best direction, to tack where we need to, and to try both to help as many people as possible and, 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 and to have a cleaner and safer city. So today, we are going to sort of divide the workshop into two, although there may be other things that people want to discuss, which is fine. Number one, we want to hear from our county partners here about the county's efforts around health and human services, mental health and substance abuse, about our partnership agreement, which is about, it does not preclude enforcement, by the way, does not preclude enforcement in any way, but it is fundamentally about the city and county working together to try and help navigate as many people off the streets as possible into shelter, transitional housing, and/or permanent housing with whatever it takes, as we say many times, whatever services and supports are needed to help that individual end their homelessness. That's one piece of this. Separate, and again, everything overlaps in ways because we are one city, is a discussion about enforcement or compliance, depending how one wants to phrase it. And on this score, the city does have a number of existing ordinances on the books. We have a critical infrastructure ordinance. We have a school-based proximity ordinance. We have a sidewalk ordinance. We have a private property ordinance. And members have raised questions about, about what we were, what we are doing on the compliance front. Though the two pieces do work together, I just wanted to say what I just said because I want us to have the discussion clearly understanding that there are two complementary parts of this whole discussion, and, and to, when you're talking about one, to either refer to the other or distinguish it from the other so that we can not conflate various issues that maybe, that we shouldn't conflate. Okay? So I want to begin talking to Councilmember Jennings here, right before the hearing, by asking the county to come up. Because fundamentally, no matter one's position on enforcement, I will express my opinion when we get to that, we all know that if we're ultimately going to be successful and make our streets safer and cleaner and help more people, that it is going to take intensive outreach, housing, shelter, and services for people, voluntary or involuntary. And that's why the partnership agreement is so important and why we've worked so hard to come together with the county in the way that we have. So I want to introduce Siobhan Katari, who is, I don't know, the deputy county executive, I believe, who was the former head of Health and Human Services at the county and is the point person and has been a great partner for us as we have developed this, this partnership agreement. Siobhan, welcome.
Great. Thank you, thank you. As you said, I'm Siobhan Katari, deputy county executive over our social services departments. And I have to first off apologize to the council. We were under the impression that today would just be a workshop on compliance, so we did not come prepared with any presentation. We're here because we're happy to answer any questions that you have related to the services the county provides, both behavioral health and social services. We can talk about our partnership with the city and DCR in terms of the partnership agreement, and we can talk about some of the things that are happening in the unincorporated areas, similar to what our director of homeless and housing services, Emily Halkin, did provide to our board of supervisors, but we were under the impression that this would be focused on compliance today. So apologies that we're not prepared for a presentation.
That's okay. There may have been some misunderstanding, but that's okay.
So my, my recommendation is maybe allow Assistant City Manager Laura to do his presentation, and then as questions come up, we can certainly be here for those.
Well, why don't we do that? I think that, that, that will, will then reverse the order, but if you don't mind, we were actually trying to be sensitive to your time.
I appreciate that.
In terms of the way we were thinking about this, but if you don't mind staying, because again, maybe ultimately the two different subject matters that I outlined do ultimately converge in some way, and so maybe we'll hear from Mario Lar on compliance, and then we may get back to the county. All right? Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, yeah, Honorable Mayor and Council Mario Lar, Assistant City Manager. The focus on the presentation that I have is on the city's current homeless response protocol. I have about 35 slides to get through, so I'll just get right to it. The citywide homelessness response protocol, as outlined in the memo dated October 18th, 2022, that was attached to the report, provides guidelines for cities' interdepartmental response to address encampments. It takes into consideration the complex legal environment, need for multidisciplinary and coordinated response, direction from council for a balance to offering services as to individuals experiencing homelessness while seeking compliance with city ordinances, and it addresses public health and safety concerns while using finite resources. Martin v. Boise prohibits cities from ticketing or arresting persons experiencing homelessness from, for sleeping or camping in public property if there are no shelter beds available as an alternative. However, it doesn't mean that the city is unable to prohibit camping under certain circumstances. In the last year, for example, the city has adopted a couple of ordinances to update the city code as it pertains to sidewalk obstruction and as it pertains to critical infrastructure. The city council also adopted a resolution providing direction regarding enforcement of Chapter 12.24 of the city code relating to sidewalk obstruction, which essentially requires volunteer compliance and avoidance of citations or assessing penalties for those who violate Chapter 12.24. Sorry. Also, within the last year, an injunction was filed to prevent the city from clearing encampments during severe weather. That injunction was initially for 30 days, and then it was extended for an additional 30 days. The current citywide homeless response protocol takes all of these factors into consideration. More recently, Measure O was passed in November of 2022 by the majority of voters, and it put into effect the Emergency Shelter and Enforcement Act of 2022, ESEA is how I'll refer to it. This created limited obligations for the city of Sacramento. The city is in compliance with Measure O, given that the fiscal thresholds has been met, and a key provision of Measure O, which is the city-county partnership agreement, outlines how the city and the county are collaborating to increase outreach efforts, to increase access to behavioral health services, as well as increase the availability of temporary shelters and permanent affordable housing. I've included this map for illustrative purposes. This map shows areas across the city where camping is prohibited due to proximity to critical infrastructure. Those are the black shaded areas. The brown shaded areas reflects limitations on where new shelters can be placed for purposes of meeting the obligations of Measure O or ESEA. For example, new shelters cannot be within 500 feet of a stream or river, or within 1,000 feet of a school, library, playground, or a licensed daycare. Encampments that fall within these areas, as well as those that violate city ordinances pertaining to sidewalk obstruction or camping within a park, trail, or habitat, are the encampments that tend to be assessed as Level 1, highest priority, encampments. So the city homeless response protocol can be broken down into three main areas: outreach, camp management, and compliance. The goal of outreach and engagement is to connect community members who are experiencing homelessness to needed social services and to shelter. To do so, this involves establishing rapport, enrolling folks into HMIS and coordinated access systems, conducting needs assessments, including mental health assessments of individuals and referral services to other resources. While doing so, navigators are also conducting encampment assessments for prioritization and camp management activities. The goal of camp management is to reduce the impact of the encampment on the surrounding neighborhoods, and it is to reduce the potential of public health and safety hazards, including threats of fires and removal of biohazards. Generally, camp management is done by assisting community members who are experiencing homelessness to reduce the size of their encampments to items that are essential. The goal of compliance is to ensure compliance with city ordinances. The current focus is on ensuring safe passage remains available on sidewalks, encampments are not in violation of critical infrastructure ordinance, such as the 500-foot buffer for K through 12 schools, and that parks and sensitive habitat areas are protected. The average time it takes DCR navigators to close out a 311 request for service is approximately nine days. When DCR staff responds to a call, they conduct both a needs assessment of the community member in that encampment, as well as an encampment assessment, as I indicated earlier. If after outreach there are no hazards or violation of city ordinances, the case can be closed. However, camp management is often necessary to address violations of city ordinances and hazards that are observed. DCR navigators work with the community members to reduce trash and get, to get them in compliance with city ordinances before closing the case. A follow-up visit is conducted, and if encampments are observed to have violations or hazards, DCR will refer the case to a code enforcement officer to post a notice to abate. Once a notice to abate is posted, the case is referred to the PD Impact Team. This map illustrates Level 1 assessed encampments. Currently, there are 27 assessed Level 1, or highest priority, encampments. If an encampment is assessed as Level 1, they will receive priority for the city-county teams that include behavioral health specialists and connections to social services. Simultaneously, however, the public safety and health hazards and violations are addressed, so some camp management activities and compliance, compliance activities will also occur. To the greatest extent possible, these actions are coordinated. Coordination takes time. Availability of shelter and services, weather conditions, are also factors that can impact how long it takes to address an encampment. There you have a list of the top 10 encampments that we're currently working on. DCR has responded to more than 13,000 calls since the beginning of 2023. District 4 and District 2 have had the highest number of calls for service. Due to the high number of calls, response times are impacted, and heat maps are necessary and generated to help staff deploy limited resources to the highest impacted areas. This slide provides an overview of the types of calls that are received through 311 and that are referred to DCR in one of the following service types. Unhoused self-referral calls are received from community members who are experiencing homelessness and who are seeking services for themselves and their households. Concerned-type calls are widely varied, ranging from community members concerned about wellness of an encampment resident to community members concerned about the impact of the encampment that it's having on their surrounding neighborhoods or businesses. Park or bike trail service types are used to report concerns related to encampments in city parks, including bike trails. Homeless encampment blocking sidewalk is used to report encampments in violation of the sidewalk ordinance. Homeless encampments that are 500 feet from school is a call type used to report encampments that are in violation of the critical infrastructure ordinance and the 500-foot buffer zone. And DCR also receives referrals from code enforcement, because code enforcement officers refer cases when they respond to a call for services related to an occupied vehicle. Due to Measure O or ESEA, as of June 21st, residents are also able to submit notice of demand forms, which will automatically generate a case number and be routed to DCR for assessment. Approximately 115 forms have been filed to date. Thirty-four of the filed notices and demand forms were associated with previously assessed Level 1 encampments that are already being addressed in accordance with the city protocol and available resources. Some of the outcomes of the citywide homeless response protocol includes a significant removal of trash and debris from encampments. Since the start of the year, over 27,000 cubic yards of waste and over 24,000 hypodermic needles have been removed. In the last year, the city doubled the amount of allocated resources to trash removal, from $2 million to $4 million, and there are eight crews operating citywide, seven days per week. This slide illustrates some of the outcomes of outreach activities. Since January 1, 2023, DCR and HOPE Cooperative outreach staff have engaged with approximately 2,300 people who are interested in seeking services and/or shelter. Shelter referrals were made to over 1,000 individuals, and 697 were placed into shelter or respite. The figures in these slides are labeled as preliminary because more analysis is needed and improvement needs to be made on how we track and gather this data. When a referral is made through coordinated access, for example, if a person is not transported by DCR and is entered into the system by themselves, we do not necessarily get that count. So the 697 figure is, is a conservative estimate. This slide simply illustrates the main functions or activities towards which the DCR's limited budget is allocated. The bulk of it, 80% of it, is allocated towards providing shelter, shelter services. Then the next section, about 11%, is geared towards providing outreach. Here, this illustrates that DCR refers approximately 2% of the calls that it responds to to PD Impact for further action, and then we'll talk about PD Impact's role. During the first five months of this year, the PD Impact Team handled 610 calls for services. Staff of the Impact Units consist of six officers and one sergeant, who are here today for this, for this workshop. Their duties include but are not limited to the following: responding to complaints of illegal activity in and around camps, collaborating with service providers and other private entities, coordinating cleanup efforts, conducting crime prevention through environmental design assessments for homeless-related issues. They work a schedule from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesdays through Fridays, with a smaller, modified crew supplementing the weekends, providing seven days a week coverage. They have specialized equipment that include four-wheel-drive pickup trucks, which allows them for easier access into camp sites and locations where standard patrol vehicles cannot traverse. They receive requests from multiple sources to assist in camp cleanups and crime reduction. Attention to smaller camps is a part of their daily workload. Most of their time and resources are focused, however, on larger encampments, where biohazards, criminal activity, critical infrastructure, and public health and safety is being jeopardized. The Impact Team connects people experiencing homelessness to resources and shelters through coordination with Department of Community Response. Here, I will talk about a large encampment cleanup effort of a leased city property at Haggen Oaks Golf Complex. A site assessment of this area revealed that there were, there was a significant public and safety health risk that required urgent attention. There were, there was an immense amount of trash, debris, abandoned vehicles, narcotics, parfumelia, and potentially hazardous materials dumped at the location. There had been a number of fires reported in this immediate area, and that's the area shown on the map, and clear evidence that recent fire activity had occurred. The property is adjacent to critical infrastructure of the regional transit light rail and nearby Interstate 80. There was a disproportionate number of community concerns documented through 911, 311 systems, and direct constituent complaints as well. Intensive outreach began in February. Planning and coordination took place in March, and cleanup started in April. SPD Impact officers worked in conjunction with code enforcement, Public Works, Department of Utilities, Fire Department, and the Department of Community Response. In addition, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Work Project, Morton Gulf, Union Pacific Railroad, Caltrans, and Forensic Clean provided support throughout this project. Cleanup occurred seven days a week from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM and officially concluded on Friday of April 21st, 2023. SPD and onsite security have continued to monitor the property to discourage individuals from trespassing on this property. This was actually city-owned property that was leased to Morton Gulf, therefore it was treated as a private trespass. These are some of the outcomes from that cleanup activity. Some of the metrics that they had: number of folks who were contacted, and number of arrests, and the amount of debris that was removed. Prior to the cleanup, DCR, as well as the city-county teams, did intensive outreach in this area, and here you can see some of the outcomes of that outreach effort. Later on in the presentation, I will have some before and after pictures of areas that were treated similarly. Park rangers lead the efforts to address homeless encampments in the parks and trails. During the first five months of the year, they responded to over 250 homeless-related calls for services. They coordinated outreach with department, as do the PD Impact Team, and conducted several cleanup projects. They removed over three tons of garbage at Chicory Bend and over 10,000 pounds of garbage from O'Neill Park. Recently, at Granite Park, Regional Park, they removed over 21,000 pounds of trash and over 1,000 hypodermic needles from encampments that are in the undeveloped areas of this Code enforcement. Code enforcement officers interact with the homeless population almost on a daily basis. Most interactions with the city's homeless population occur when they are addressing complaints of occupied recreational vehicles and trailers. A team of code enforcement officers is assigned to proactively address various locations with a high concentration of occupied recreational vehicles throughout the city. The team routinely visits more than 30 locations throughout the city with a connection, with a concentration of RVs and trailers. The intent of these visits is to ensure that the RVs and trailers comply with California vehicle code requirements and to address any obstructions of public right-of-way and sidewalks and coordinate with the solid waste to remove garbage. The team conducts these visits at least three times a week for a minimum of four to five hours per visit. Referrals to the Department of Community Response, again, a lot of coordination takes place, are made so that services are provided. However, if vehicles that fail to comply with the vehicle code, they are abated. The process, as you can tell, is resource-intensive, because many RVs and trailers often voluntarily move to other locations or within residential neighborhoods. Complaints are constantly shifting as our efforts force most homeless living in these vehicles to move temporarily. Inevitably, many return to locations where they were originally tagged with a notice to move for, by code compliance. Between January to May 2023, code compliance abated a total of 1,119 abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, and inoperative vehicles that were in public right-of-ways. It should be noted that during this period between January 6 and April 17, there were limited abasements due to severe weather. Sorry. When severe weather activations occur, we, there is an effort to, made to avoid displacing individuals who are experiencing homelessness from their encampments unless there is an immediate significant safety concern. So the citywide homeless response protocol involves multiple city departments, as well as coordination with outside agencies. On a weekly basis, on Tuesdays generally, DCR staff leads a meeting to go over availability of shelter space, assessment of encampments, deployment of city-county teams, referrals to code, PD, park rangers for compliance in those areas where outreach efforts have been exhausted, and coordination of cleanup efforts. And here are some of the before and after slides that are the result of those coordinated efforts and weekly meetings. Here you have six and X-ray, and the, and I'll flip through these quickly so you can get a sense of the volume of work that is being done. And unfortunately, what tends to happen is that some of these sites, after they are cleaned up, they return to the condition that they were in previously, and we have to return to do the, the work over again. And again, the, the teams are guided by the heat maps that are generated through the, the calls for services that we receive through 311, through PD, and through fire, and DCR team goes out to assess before it's referred for a cleanup action. But here you have several examples of areas where the team needed to respond to, to address mainly sidewalk violations in these instances that I'm showing here. Here is Auburn Road with the vehicular code, work, the code compliance that declare some of these areas. I would like to thank everyone involved in the process for their hard work. Some of them are in the audience here today, several of them are here. We also have, with House Representatives from the county, as you're aware, and SSF to address related issues that impact the city's response for homelessness. That concludes the presentation, and we'll open up for Q and A.
Got through 30-plus slides relatively quickly, with a lot, a lot of information. Thank you. Members, we do have 11 people signed up to testify. What's that? Let's, let's hear from the, the public first, and then we will open this up for conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to remind members of the public who wish to address the council, you should complete a speaker slip, which can be in the back of the room. If you are in Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on an item. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speakerships in chambers, and the raise-hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. You all have two minutes to address the council. And so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules and procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website, copies in the back of the room, and summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. Presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. I do have eight speakers on, in chambers and 12 online. The first is James Allison, then Kay Kimby, then Annie Keys. And feel free to line up, it does look like we have 20 people, so if you want to line up in the aisle, I'm going to read a few. James Allison, Kay Kimby, Annie Keys, Wendy Lofney Rusty.
I thought you said eight. Did you say eight?
Perfect. Hello, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, my name is James Allison with the Midtown Association. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this today. Midtown Association is a property business improvement district that represents over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. I am here today to urge the city to pursue meaningful action to address the homelessness crisis. We face a great need for affordable housing, additional shelter capacity, comprehensive behavioral health treatment, robust case management, and long-term solutions to combat housing insecurity. Those needs do not, however, negate the city's responsibility to manage the public space and guarantee a safe environment for everyone. As outlined in the staff report, the city has enacted ordinances and protocols to manage encampments, including the sidewalk ordinance, updating the critical infrastructure ordinance, and outlining encampment enforcement guidelines. Yet insufficient resources and action. Yet insufficient resources and action have led to a worsening crisis that deeply impacts all parts of our community. The incidents spoken of by residents and businesses are not simple inconveniences, but actions that bring with them significant cost and consequence. A property owner of a building recently vacated by the state is unable to perform building improvements to bring in a new tenant. As late as last Friday, or recent as last Friday, a target, the target at 17th and J Streets had an individual set fire to their cosmetics department, resulting in significant damage to the store and a question of whether or not they want to reopen after experiencing a string of theft and crime since opening. An encampment that is immediately next to the Muir Children's Park has routinely required police intervention because of the violence and hostility directed towards our staff. While we have provided regular and consistent outreach to this encampment, it has continued to grow in size. These stories are not unique and replicated across the city. We are here today to ask the city to empower its staff through clear direction and adequate allotment of needed resources to support all members of our community regardless of their housing status. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kay Kimber, then Annie Keys.
Hello, my fellow Sacramentans. My name is Keith Kimber, I'm a resident of District One. I live off of Kelton in Maine. A week ago, we had one of our neighbors that was killed by regular campers at an encampment that's always on Kelton. We repeatedly called for parking enforcement and various enforcement, and nothing has happened. In fact, the black SUV that killed our neighbor was one of the regular illegally parked vehicles. I'm here basically to ask why parking enforcement requires DCR enforcement or anything else, especially when it's in a, obviously marked no parking zone, a red zone, when if any of us parked in one of those, we should be towed immediately. The lack of the enforcement prior has cost him his life. And in fact, we have made several complaints since after this, I'm sorry for slamming on this, on the lectern, and there's still been no enforcement. There's still people there, and it's literally next to a river, right next to Hanson Ranch Park. It, it, that's a stream, and there's city infrastructure there, too. There's, there's water infrastructure, there's, there's pumps, reservoirs, and that's important. I've been homeless myself, so when I'm asking for, there, there should be some compliance, people may think that I'm coming from a point of privilege, but it's not. It's coming from having been in those shoes. And when I was in those shoes, I respected our community, and I didn't pollute it, I didn't engage in crimes, and I certainly didn't run over a disabled veteran. I, I just think it's not fair that the homeless people now get a free pass to blatantly violate the law when just regular enforcement by parking enforcement would do this. If the meter expires for my car that's parked across the street, I want to be ticketed immediately. But because we're on the outskirts, and because it's, they're homeless, they're extra protected, that's just not fair, and it really is a safety concern. I'm going to be buying a new car later this, at the end of the next month, and I'm probably going to be buying it in Roseville. My, my, because I feel that my sales tax dollars, they don't go to use, good use here if there's a blatant disregard for our laws. Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Annie Keys, then Wendy Loftings-Rosati, then Gary Futterer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Annie Keys here on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership and the 66 blocks of residents, businesses, and properties we represent in the urban core of Sacramento. We'd like to thank the city manager and council for prioritizing this very important discussion today. Needless to say, we're facing a crisis of unsheltered homelessness and housing insecurity, not only in Sacramento, but state and nationwide. And we acknowledge that we, as community leaders, must do everything possible to address many of the root causes of chronic homelessness with proper case management, behavioral and mental health support, and housing safeguards to prevent displacement. We applaud the city's efforts to take steps towards providing shelter, both temporary and permanent, for those experiencing homelessness. However, we recognize that in many instances, the proliferation of unsheltered encampments in public spaces affect the health and safety of those residing within them, as well as the house neighbors who live nearby. In the immediate term, there must be an enhanced level of management and responsiveness of the public realm that addresses the health, safety, and accessibility concerns of many of our public corridors in Sacramento. We ask that our city departments have the direction and resources to utilize the tools already in place and approved by council to address these concerns, including the sidewalk ordinance and the critical infrastructure buffer zones. We acknowledge that this is a crisis not to be handled only by our city leaders, and applaud what the council and mayor have accomplished in codifying the partnership with Sacramento County to ensure a holistic response to the region's needs. Yet, our communities continue to face an untenable situation. We urge further action from city leadership to utilize the aforementioned tools to make our public spaces clean, welcoming, and safe for everyone who chooses Sacramento as their city to call home. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Wendy Lofting-Rosati, and then Gary Futterer, and David Herbert.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Wendy Lofting-Rosati, and I am a business owner of a family-owned business in Midtown that's been around for 62 years. This is the worst we've ever experienced in homelessness. And in Midtown, it's been around for a long time, and I know with everything, it's gotten a lot worse. But there is this really bad encampment on 21st and J Street right now, which every morning I go to work an hour early to deal with this, to take pictures, to call Midtown Business Association, who's doing a good job, to try to make the area clean for everyone, for my customers, for my neighbors, and just the public in general. They are blocking the sidewalks every single day. They are having open fires on the sidewalks right next to their tents, endangering the life and safety of everyone in the neighborhood. They are having fights, and actually in June, one of, someone died on the encampment that had been in a confrontation the day before. So I really urge you to take some steps and measures. O was supposed to be able to help take care of this, and I hope that you put your efforts forward and move forward to help us clear this space. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Gary Futterer, then David Herbert.
Hi, Mayor, City Council folks. I live in District Four. I'm here to represent at least 10 of my neighbors on 15th Street. I did not speak to anybody regarding the Midtown Association, the fella that spoke at first, but this is in regards to a homeless encampment at 15th and C. You do have an ordinance in place that has a buffer between schools and sidewalks. I think it should have been expanded to parks, because at 15th and C, there's a children's park, and since this encampment has arose at this location, that park is empty, and these folks are taking a bath in the city waters faucet. So there is a very, very high increase of this foot traffic between 15th and C and 15th and E, there's a little grocery store. And I made the bad mistake, because I'm not scared of being confronted, but I made a bad mistake to get in the middle of one of the guys who lives there selling drugs in front of my house, and I live on 15th Street, and I asked him if he would please not sell drugs in front of my house. I've contacted PD about it, they're aware of this individual, and he's now verbally threatening us neighbors. We no longer feel safe sitting on our front porches. Midtown Business Association does go down there and power-clean the area. I befriended another fella out of that location, and Katie had, had, had an encampment placed at Miller Park, and it was working. This guy was there. He was getting his feet on the ground, they were helping him, they were getting him an ID, they were getting him health insurance and that. Then the winter hit, and because of the location of that encampment...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is David Herbert, then Devin Stricker.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is David Herbert. I am the Chair of the Boulevard Park Neighborhood Association, and I feel responsible for my neighborhood. I know there are other people that are responsible for taking care of the homeless, and that's wonderful, but we are responsible for an equally important, if not more important, in my opinion, because I'm on the board of our neighborhood. Three of my neighbors recently moved away over the last several months, one to Folsom, one to the Fab 40s, and one to Fair Oaks. We're very close friends. We are concerned, we see no improvement, we just see it keep getting worse and worse. All these slides show improvements being done, we don't see it. It just grows and grows and grows. We don't know who to turn to. 311 is not effective, Measure O is not effective, the sidewalk ordinance is not effective, our, our D4 representative doesn't do what we needed to do. Martin Boise, we always hear that, but there are equally important laws that are on the books that are not being enforced. Boise is being enforced, squatters in homes or trespassing are not being enforced, fires, unleashed dogs, drug use, you know, on and on and on. And I, I guess you noticed the D4 seems to be getting, the list was this long on the graph, and many of the other districts are this big, so we're getting the brunt of it. And it's not fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Devin Stricker, then Jenna Abbott.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council and staff. Thank you for having me here. I want to thank you for your continued efforts on this issue, but unfortunately, as you know, the problem persists, is growing and becoming more embedded. I'm Devin Stricker, I'm Executive Director of the River District in downtown Sacramento, and we already have the highest concentration of shelter beds, services, and affordable housing in the, in the city. As of today, all of our apartment units are 100% affordable. We have some new projects coming online, but I just want to share a few incidents that have happened in the recent weeks with these new businesses. We have a ground-up new construction storage facility coming that's going to be opening soon. Unfortunately, there's an encampment located behind them that just vandalized and stole the brand-new wrought iron fence that they installed. It's thousands of dollars' worth of damage. They lit a fire that almost caught the adjacent hotel on fire, and this is a business that's going to have an onsite resident manager who's a single mother with a child living in it. The state is building the Richards Boulevard Office Complex, but they have had several instances of break-ins, people broke in just to set off the fire extinguishers. The encampments have become hostile towards the workers, throwing rocks at their cars as they drive by, so they've actually instructed all of their employees and contractors not to drive on B Street anymore because the encampment spills out into the street. Lastly, there's an encampment next to SAC Roller Derby, who's trying to build a sports facility in the River District, but they are unfortunately considering pausing their activities due to the unsafety of the encampment neighboring them. So we're trying to build a sustainable, equitable community with mixed-income residents, neighborhood-serving retail, and legacy industrial and large-scale commercial businesses, but we can, cannot do that without your help to try to mitigate this problem. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jenna Abbott, then Eric Sanchez.
Good afternoon. I'm Jenna Abbott, and most of the time when I stand before you, I do so as a representative of my employer, but not today. Today, I'm here as myself, a citizen of Sacramento and a resident of Midtown, someone who believes deeply in the importance of the fabric of this community. Most of you on that dais know that I moved to Sacramento from the county because I wanted to be part of building this city. I live where I live to do that. I work where I work because I want to do that. I want to be here to help and build. I'm here today off the clock on my lunch break because I'm confused as to how to successfully ask for your help and actually achieve it. As I walk through my neighborhood, I frequently cross streets to avoid running a gauntlet of tents, many of them containing loose animals and angry people. I have been verbally assaulted and physically threatened. I fully understand and embrace that I live in a verbal, in an urban environment, and I miss feeling safe and happy in my neighborhood. I'm awakened several times a night by the cries and screams of people who are camped near, close by my home or walking through the streets because they have nowhere to go. Last night, the screaming and arguing and fighting under my window started at 2:13 AM, and it went on until almost 4:00 AM. I am tired, both physically and mentally. I no longer walk my dogs alone through my neighborhood because I don't want to have to make the decision about whether to protect myself or my dogs. That's not a decision that I'm willing to make when I have to protect them from people who are suffering from mental illness or hopelessness. A person experiencing homelessness is presented with outreach and asked repeatedly if they will accept help. You say that as soon as they're ready, you'll help, but I'm not seeing where the understanding is that I and others like me, my neighbors, those small business owners like those who are here today and are struggling to stay open in what feels like a battle zone also need your help. I was personally horrified, horrified to read about the auto-response generated by the portal setup to receive Measure O responses. To be frank, I deserve better than that. We all deserve better than that, and you all should be giving us better than that. Please don't say that you'll call me after this meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I want you to have an open discussion about this on that.
Thank you for your comments. My next speaker is Eric Sanchez, then John Freias-Morales. And I have 12 more speakers. Eric Sanchez, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Eric Sanchez here. And I would like to speak on behalf of District Four. We are hearing a lot of anti-homeless speech going on, and none of this workshop being talked about is, is quite debilitating in a sense for being an unhoused person myself because I just hear that people are constantly hating things that are, you know, people are doing when we got no home to go to, and it hurts, you know? Not, not, not being able to, to be a good part of society, and all you hear is hate speech coming at you, so that, that's really all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is John Freias-Morales.
Hello. 70,000 Sacramento voters approved of Measure O, but the council is stopping enactment of Measure O and disenfranchising 70,000 voters who approved of the emergency shelter. Stop disrespecting the majority of voters who approved of Measure O. The public elected you to follow the law, not ignore laws you don't like. The right to vote is being undermined. Enforce the ordinance. Until Measure O is enforced, the city will continue to be in a state of lawlessness, and the homeless will suffer inhumane conditions. Hundreds of Sacramento voters have gone online in the past week to file notices of violation and demand to abate camps. 70,000 voters approved of Measure O because they want to feel safe in their own homes, and the voters want accountability for helping the homeless. The right to vote is being undermined. Why hasn't the city manager established rules of procedure for the processing of Measure O violations and appeals? Why hasn't the city manager hired a hearing examiner to enforce encampment violations? The city is allowing homeless people to suffer at inhumane encampments, but the Measure O hearing examiner will have the ability to order city remediation. A majority of voters approved of oversight and correction of camp violations. Voters also approved of the appeal process. Until Measure O is enforced, the city will continue to be in a state of lawlessness, and the homeless will suffer inhumane conditions. The right to vote is being undermined. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ.
One's opinion on enforcement doesn't matter. One's opinion necessarily defers to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court doesn't set a minimum percentage of shelter space required before dehumanization occurs. That is absurd on its face, and our local laws don't supersede the Constitution. Howard has found a way around the city's unconstitutional actions by preferentially renting out city assets, assets we all pay for to preferentially benefit businesses who can violate the Constitution to their heart's desires by sweeping encampments. Sweeping encampments has a death toll. It increases assaults and decreases the ability to house people by destroying vital paperwork that people need to access services and income. You've been asked to tell people where they can camp, where they can exist since non-existing isn't an option, although you are doing your best to jail them, and you still won't tell them where they can camp. Jailing is more expensive than housing, so you necessarily are choosing cruelty over humanity. The councils and boards' actions are inhumane. The demands of housed people and businesses are inhumane. People are more valuable than profit, period, full stop. If you don't see that, then you are acting out inhumanly. House them, provide housing. Enforcement of accepting shelter isn't necessary if the housing you're providing is available and meets their needs. Acting like people don't want housing is a lie. Housing that meets needs is always the goal, but the needs must be met. You can't just give inadequate shelter and expect people to accept it because you don't value their autonomy. Provide trash pickup, provide bathroom facilities, provide water, provide charging infrastructure. Doing all of this will mitigate impact on neighborhoods they are in or near in the meantime. Unhoused people are part of our communities. We show our humanity by helping them, we show our inhumanity by demonizing and othering them. Every person you trot out to justify dehumanizing... Every person you trot out to justify dehumanizing treatment, kids, single moms, gay people, trans people, the disabled, the mentally ill, and the elderly are all the same people who are overrepresented among our unhoused populations. Provide housing in the long term, mitigate insurance.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi, then Talia Anderson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. So I'd like to just open with a quote from the Martin v. Boise court case, just to remind you all of what legal standard is here involving all of this. This is from the opinion. It says, "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter." Unless something crazy happened in the last few days, the city still does not have sufficient shelter space for the unhoused population that lives within its borders, which means there is not sufficient shelter space for them. So the city is not, there is no, quote, "option of sleeping indoors" for people. So the government cannot criminalize people for sleeping outside. They don't have a choice in the matter. But according to the presentation we just saw today, sweeps are still happening. People are still being displaced. This is unacceptable. This is a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, and the city is going to get sued for it. You guys are gonna, if you don't stop on your own, you're going to be forced to stop. So you should stop on your own before things go that far. Additionally, I'd like to just make a comment that it's unfortunate that you decided to have this workshop on homelessness, something that is an issue that consistently ranks as the most important issue among voters in the city of Sacramento, that you decided to schedule it during the middle of a workday without any more than just the bare minimum 72 hours notice that's required by the Brown Act, because it makes it really difficult for people to come unless, you know, unlike the city, the Chamber of Commerce folks, they're getting paid to be here and express their disgusting opinions. So a lot of folks aren't here. I don't think any outreach was done to the unhoused community to get them to be here at this workshop. It seems like they should probably have a voice in this issue. I don't know. Maybe that's just me. Thanks for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Talia Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, yeah, I also agree with Dylan. I think that we should be including the unhoused community of Sacramento in these discussions. I think if you talk to any of the folks from those camps that Mario listed in his presentation, that they will tell you that no adequate services have been offered. It is super obvious to anybody in the unhoused community among advocates for the unhoused that these services are inadequate, not sufficient. The only solution is public housing. All of these resources being poured into abatement are just displacing people. You cannot choose who lives in Sacramento. These are the residents that live here. You need to take care of them. And to the community members in the chambers expressing their fear of encampments, you know, I would invite you to imagine what your life would look like without a home, without a shower, without a phone, without internet. How would you meaningfully make a life for yourself? These people that you're so afraid of are vulnerable. They are extremely vulnerable. They are in crisis. So I invite you to look upon them in that way with compassion and see what you can do, see how you can help. How would you, how would your life look like if you were consistently treated like dogshit by literally everyone? Yeah, it's just not, it's not tenable to, I don't know. We're treating these people as if they are trash, and you are seeking, the city is seeking to just clear them out as if they were a dumpster fire. So I wish we could just treat these folks like humans instead of trash. Yeah, I, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jennifer Holden.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jennifer Holden, and I am a resident of District Five. And I'm going to echo some of the other speakers who have spoken today about this is Measure O and its implementation is a very hot-button topic. It is a voter measure. I'm, I kind of looked at things, I have a bunch of questions about how this meeting was noticed. First of all, was notice of this meeting posted before 12 noon on Thursday? If not, this meeting is in violation of the Brown Act. Next up, the 12 noon time has already been mentioned. Hot-button topic, but in the middle of the day instead of a 5 p.m. session. There was no notice of this meeting by city mass email, even though the notice was very abrupt, if it's within the Brown Act or outside of the Brown Act. It was not announced by mass email. It was not announced on the Sacramento City Express, City Blog of city activities and events that are happening. Up, the agenda was changed within the 24 hours before this meeting. There were 27 pages of supplemental materials added that the public really didn't have adequate time to review before attending this meeting to make their public comments. The agenda talks about the AB 1234 reports. I think the agenda needed to mention more of that. Either this meeting was poorly organized on short notice, or it is an effort to directly avoid public participation in the city government. This is not an emergency situation. Please revisit this workshop at a 5 p.m. time that has been poorly noticed and announced on social media. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jay. And I have six more speakers.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Jay, and I do homeless outreach and advocacy in Sacramento. Me and a few friends volunteer our time, money, and resources to provide certain services to encampments in Sacramento, and we've built good relationships with encampments so far. I'm going to be using the word sweep a lot because a camp abatement and camp enforcement is ultimately a sweep. I don't see the care and attention given to the homeless residents of Sacramento. During sweeps, there is a lack of communication, lack of coordination. Nobody is told where to go. Sometimes an officer will just say, "Go across the street." At one sweep, I followed a family from under T Street 99, and they had to move three times in one day because there was no earth for them to land. I hear the fear and the voices of other commenters, the frustration, and to be honest, I don't think our community needs to be divided about these issues. I will always stand with our unhoused. They are the most vulnerable. That being said, I think we can work together without destroying encampments. It seems to me that most people are harmed by encampments, that are harmed by encampments for residents and businesses in those areas who are also struggling. Why do we need to be against each other? When camps are abated, it spreads and pushes unhoused folks to more dangerous places. I can tell you point-blank that camp abatement poses a great threat to the homeless community, and so we engage discussions. I'd like to remind you that camp abatement is real harm by the state and real human beings. I take issue with the way we include crime into this conversation as well. It's dangerous to label homeless community as criminal and to discuss plans of abatements while considering crime, a thing that has nothing to do with being homeless. When an entire camp is swept, law-abiding folks are harmed. At one sweep, an officer explained to me that there were calls for service and surveillance video of crime committed by members of the camp, but there was no actual due process, and these people were evicted from their camp with that as a validating factor, and we need to treat people like humans with human rights. No one should be convicted and punished for crime that they haven't been proven guilty of.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Christina, then Sean Wright. Christina, if you'll unmute.
Hello, this is Christina Rogers, President of the LPCA. The Land Park Committee Association asks that you support all of Measure O's criteria. This includes the components of public safety and compliance. It also includes the role of the DCR in a hearing examiner. The safety of all our communities is vital to a thriving Sacramento. We believe our city has an abundance of resources and support to help those in need. We also believe compliance is essential to a better quality of life for everyone in our city. Just hearing the public comments alone shows how law-abiding citizens are being unfairly targeted and assaulted by those who infiltrate homeless camps and have no problem harming the wider community to live their lifestyle. This needs to stop. Measure O was passed by 70,000 Sacramentoans. Please respect their vote and work with the county to create a clear process and implement compliance to Measure O successfully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Sean Wright.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Sean Wright, and I'm the President of the Alkali and Mansion Classics Stirk Neighborhood Association. Over the past three decades, I have reviewed several of the city's plans to address the homeless situation. Many of them have fallen short and have made the problem worse. Homelessness is a regional problem, and any solution must include your regional partners. Currently, several cities and counties use Sacramento, especially the central city, as a solution to their homeless crisis. I've witnessed several people being transported by law enforcement, by regional law enforcement, and gray-housed and other methods to the central city, simply because of the concentration of social services in the area. This continual influx of people in need overwhelms the city's available resources, leaving residents and businesses with the homeless crisis we are discussing today. You must bring more resources to the problem, just as you did when thousands of Afghan refugees came to Sacramento with only a 24-hour notice. Your regional partners, cities, and counties all stepped up and provided emergency services and supportive services. This was a successful model that must be duplicated. This workshop appears to only address the complaint without any real solutions. We need more regional emergency shelter space in geographic locations outside the central city. Each county should have a large campus modeled after Haven for Oak. With more partners and resources, you'd be in a much better position to live up to the spirit of Measure O. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dudu Daddy.
Hi, I am, oh, sorry, just one sec. Hi, I am calling because I wanted to speak on behalf of the unhoused people that are most deeply affected by the Measure O ordinance. I, it's weird that there's, yeah, I'm okay. I'm calling in on City Council. Hi. I'm sorry. Hello. Oh, my God, I'm sorry. I'm calling in on City Council right now. Oh, my God. I'm so sorry. Unhoused people should be part of this conversation, and I just wanted to uplift what people were saying earlier about how it's weird that no one's here to speak on it. I also wanted to ask, there's a part in the DCR presentation where they, where Mario said that a lot of houseless encampments return to the place from where they're swept, and that just brings up the question, like, how does moving people and taking away all their stuff make us safer? It doesn't do anything to make us safer. It seems like a lot of the comment that I'm hearing is that people feel that the community is unsafe because of this, and I do think that's true, but I don't think that the answer is to move people. And I think that the people that are made most unsafe are the people who are affected by these ordinances, and I think they should be part of the conversation for trying to find a creative solution. What has been done is extremely inhumane. It makes people unstable. It makes them insecure, and insecurity is what leads to crime. Like, you talk about crime like these people are causing a problem, but the problem is there's no actual resources. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is MVW. I have two more speakers.
Hello. Stop the sweeps, first of all. I think when we talk about housing and about a homeless workshop, we need to talk about how the rent is too expensive for everyone. We have to remind ourselves that our neighbors are our unhoused neighbors, and your unhoused community is your neighbors. Gentrification and the proliferation of the rich is making everything worse in our city. When one in six children don't have anything to eat, are we actually looking at the problem? You're talking about sidewalk ordinances and bans from school, but what about the children that are unhoused that are walking this way? What about them? Where are the number of bodies that were found just on Roseville Road alone this year in the report, Mario? Where's all that information? Where are the names of the family members that we all lost? Our community members that we lost? Where are their faces and their names that we lost to state violence? For people that work with the unhoused community, we can tell you that after a sweep, we rarely see those people ever again, and we wonder what happened to them. Do you guys ever wonder what happened to your community members that are swept? No one will be able to afford going to a roller derby or a Kings game soon. No one can afford to do anything. People can barely afford to eat. It is absolutely ridiculous. SHRI just ended housing for hundreds of people, and you guys are talking about the unhoused, and you're talking about complaints, but you're not looking at the solutions. Stop the sweeps. Enforcement is not assistance. Care about your constituents. What are you doing? You're making the problem worse. Quit your job or do something.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker on this item is OB.
Hi, thank you, Council members and Mayor, for hearing me. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, so I want to just address a couple of things. Through the PowerPoint presentation, there was some numbers. One specifically I noted was 6,634 cubic yards of debris were cleared, I believe, in the Roseville Road encampment, but I want to know where are the metrics that determine that how much of that was actually survival gear that was cleared out, that was determined to be junk? None of the sweeps have ever stored any survival gear or anything that would help these people keep their items, which does, in fact, lead to supposed crimes of necessity, where folks have to find food by five-finger discount. Additionally, Measure O, everyone's talking about it as if it's going to be the solution, yet part of the actual verbiage of Measure O includes that it's unlawful and a public nuisance to be in a campment located on any public or private property that fails to properly dispose of waste, yet encampments are not provided county or city services in waste management or any kind of cleanup or quarter-potty to remove this waste from the sidewalks and the curbs and whatnot. There's no support from county. I want to know, in the partnership, where is county support? Finally, solutions to this can be more housing. However, developments such as in Councilmember Vangs' district, that's the Delta Shores area, at $600,000 starting is not going to help. Kick out outside investors in our housing developments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank you very much to the members of the public. And I want to turn it over to Council for discussion here. And again, this is a workshop. We're not voting, and so I think it's appropriate and necessary that we really get into it and discuss all the issues here. So let me begin. I've got, was it Councilmember Talamontes or Councilmember Jennings? Whoever wants to go first.
I'll start it off, Mayor.
Okay, and then I'll go to...
It's okay with my colleague. Thank you. I want to thank everybody that spoke, those who are in the chambers, and those who called us on the phone. Your testimony was heartfelt and touched, I know, each of us in a way. We heard you clearly. We heard some of the pain of people who are facing crisis. We heard the neighbors who have moved away because of the circumstances. We've heard the people who are hurt from what's going on. I just want to ask the city clerk, just so I'm clear on one thing. There was conversation about whether or not this meeting was noticed properly, and I know that I asked for the meeting more than two weeks ago, and I would imagine, based on that, that the meeting was noticed properly, and I just want confirmation for that, that people don't think we did this at 12 o'clock in order to keep people out of the meeting, that the meeting was noticed properly, and we did it at a time that would best meet the needs of our agenda. So if you could just speak to that very quick.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. I appreciate that. So the Brown Act for a regular meeting is a 72-hours notice, which we satisfied. The council also has a sunshine ordinance, which is 120 hours, which we satisfied. This is a special meeting, which means it wasn't a meeting that was adopted on our regular calendar, which only requires 24-hours notice. We did publish this agenda on Thursday afternoon. We did publish this agenda on Thursday afternoon.
Thank you very much. So with that said, I, I asked for a workshop on this subject matter for the purposes of being able to listen to the public and hear what the public has to say. And I wanted the opportunity for all of my colleagues and I to have the opportunity to discuss this, when this was the only thing that was on the agenda. And so even though the county may be misunderstood, or we did not communicate properly, it actually works out well, that this was the thing on the agenda that we all want to talk about and that we all want to give direction on. And I think that's what's going to happen today, that we're not, we don't have any other subject matter to talk about, and this is something that we all can talk about and agree and give direction to the city manager on the direction that needs to happen as we move forward. And I think that's very important, because all of us are affected by what's going on. When we look at a safe environment or an unsafe environment, whether you're unhoused or whether you're housed, this affects all of us. And we do want a city where we are, we feel safe, where we can walk our dogs and not feel threatened, where we can walk down the sidewalks. One of the things that was very clear to me when, in putting this on, is I wanted to make sure that we were in full compliance with the ordinances that we have on the books. And so that's one of the things that I want to make sure happens out of this, because I believe we have some ordinances that help us to make the residents and constituents of Sacramento feel safer in this whole thing. So I get emotional when I talk about this, because it affects me to see people who are living in conditions that I don't feel are in their best environment. And that's just me. When I see people living on the streets in encampments, and they don't have the comforts of home that we have all become accustomed to, I want to do everything I can to help them. And I know we, as a united body, want to do the exact same thing. We want to help. We want to do everything we can. And we've done a great job. The mayor and the city manager and the four-by-two have done an incredible job of getting more housing than we've ever had for the unhoused. And I applaud you, mayor. Your, your leadership and your direction and, and your pursuit of housing. And you're still not satisfied. At our last two meetings ago, or whatever, whenever it was, you talked about more. And we know we need more. We absolutely know we need more. There's, we, I don't know that we'll ever catch up to the housing that we need based on the number of unhoused that we have out in our community. But we're working on that, and we're working on ways. And, and the battle is not, not, not finished. And it's going to take all of us working together in order to accomplish the task and work on what we need to work on, to deal with the issue of the unhoused that we have in front of us. And so it's not a satisfactory situation for any of us, but we have to work together. And so that was why I called for this time and this period, to really have this discussion so that we can all get on the same page and give the city manager and our entire workforce of over 5,000 employees direction on which way to go. And so I'll stop there for a second. I'll allow my colleagues to continue talking. At the end of this meeting, I would like to give very specific direction. The colleagues that I've been working with, we would like to give very specific direction, and we hope that direction will move us together, one that all of us will support as we move forward. But I'd like to wait for a few minutes here for my colleagues and then give some very specific direction as far as this workshop is concerned and moving forward to make Sacramento the Sacramento that we all love, that is safe, that provides an opportunity for us to live in and enjoy, and make it a place that we call home, where we work, live, and play. So I will stop and shut up for a second.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Thanks, mayor. Just to add a little bit more context, our city manager and DCR, our Sacramento Impact team, they have nine different bosses here. And Howard gets questions and concerns from our community, from residents, from our stakeholders, and from all of us here. And this proposal and what we're doing today is hopefully giving Mario, DCR, and Howard, our city manager, the ability to stay focused on what our priorities are as a council and how we go about the heat map and how we go about homelessness, whether it's the sidewalk ordinance or critical infrastructure, and what that priority looks like, which is why it's so important for me, like Councilmember Jennings said, to create a framework and to have structure and to give you that exact, precise direction that you need so that we can move forward as a city. So now, the last time we were here, I did make the ask that we get the same presentation that the county board supervisors got. My question is, like, where did that get lost in translation? The city and the county can't be on the same page if we don't have the same information if we're not asking each other tough questions.
So, Councilwoman, I will speak to that. So we had some confusion about what this, this item was going to be here today about. And we're focusing on the compliance piece and then the respite. The presentation from the county got dropped off, and I've been texting with Siobhan Kathari. They're going to come back at a later date to make that presentation. So I'm not sure where it dropped off. We're going to figure that out. But it was clearly an ask from this council to have that same presentation. I think you made the ask, and there are at least two others.
Yeah.
So we're, we're working with them to, to bring that back at some point. If I could, though, I just want to take a, a quick moment to clarify just that for one, so thank you for asking the question. The second, before we get into the, the council comments and any other deliberation, I think it's really important to, to set the record straight here, because there's been some falsehoods being put out there that cannot stand. And honestly, there's some folks in the audience that have called in that, you know, know better, should know better. This is around Measure O. So the proponents of Measure O completely understood the, the, kind of the deal we struck as it went to the ballot, and the chief of those deal points was limiting the city's liability to $5 million, up to $5 million. We've lived up to that obligation and then some. It's not to say that's all we should be investing in this complex problem here, because we're not. If you're here as part of the budget deliberations, as you can see, we have a five-year forecast that shows us spending a minimum of $42 million a year. So tho- those two things are happening simultaneously. So for people to come forward and say, "We're not complying with the language and the measure," is just wrong. It's dishonest. And so, and there have been a lot of things being put out over the weekend, that claims that we're trying to skirt our responsibilities and whatnot. We're actually working with the county very well. Obviously, we all have to lean in a little bit more all the way around, but to suggest that somehow the city's not doing what they should be doing under Measure O and otherwise is just patently false. So I thought I'd start there and turn it back over to the council.
Okay. The homeless management information system, I know, is a component of Measure O. And this is an integrated system for both the city and the county to input their beds and track our unhoused population. I want to see if Lisa Bates can come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Would you introduce her?
Oh, yes. Lisa, if you would like to introduce yourself, if you like.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Lisa Bates, I'm the CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward. We're the lead applicant for your community's continuum of care to address homelessness.
Thank you, Lisa. And so the city, the SAC Steps Forward receives $3 million from the city and then $3 million from the county to help us run this system. So a question for Lisa, where are we at with HMI-S? Are all the beds accounted for? And can our DCR team use the system to find a bed for an unhoused family in real time?
Okay. Maybe I can start with, I believe you're referring to the Coordinated Access System, which is a co-investment between the city, the county, and your COC. The $3 million is actually over three years, so it's a million-dollar commitment annually. And the Coordinated Access System has many components to it, one of which is trying to coordinate access into all of the shelters within our community. And those shelters do report into the Homeless Management Information System, which is your database that tracks services for homeless clients in Sacramento and is largely used for a lot of the data that the state and the federal government collect, as well as information back to you all. What I can share with you, and I was asked to share, is where we stand in terms of the, the shelter capacity and the shelter participation in coordinated access, and then talk a little bit about the reporting, which is, I think, what you're also asking about. So I do have an image, if it's possible, to put on the screen. And this has been worked on with both our county partners, as well as DCR and, and your city leadership. And so what you see here on the screen, once it's zoomed in, is...
One second, we're just trying to get it.
Okay. What you see here on the first page is, is what is anticipated to be both your current and future shelters that will be participating in coordinated access. So currently, we have 603 household spots available and participating for about the last five or so months. On schedule will be family shelters for the county coming in, in June. We're already, many of them are already participating. But you have June and July, your family shelters coming online for both the city and the county. And then, as you can see, in the fall, we hope to bring on more of the other programs as they become either available or are transitioned to new providers. So that is your capacity. And by the end of this, this year, or in the fall of this year, you will have 80% of your total shelter capacity participating in coordinated access. What it does not include, and just want to be...
A question real quick on that one? So say, let's just take City of Refuge, for example. Seventeen, say that tomorrow, a bed became available, they update their system. Does DCR receive that information so that if they need a help of family, they know exactly where, when, and who to contact?
So the way that the Coordinated Access System is working is there is a referral process and to shelters. And so your DCR staff have ability to make those referrals into that process. And then through joint agreement between the city and county, we have prioritization schedule that 211 manages. And as property vacancies are available, then we go down that prioritization list and, and call and find people to make those placements. That's how it is, it is working. So anyone that is in HMI-S has access to make a referral into the shelter system. And then the shelter system is prioritizing three or four times a day availability of shelters and people and making those referrals. At the point that we have a bed open and we can make a referral, it's taking about 24 hours for that person to be placed into that, that, that shelter.
Okay. So all these are, so 80% of our providers are participating in this and inputting their data?
They will. Everybody is inputting data. Though, by the end of this year, 80% of your shelters will be running through this 211 coordinated access system.
I guess my ask is if we can move, move that process along by the end of the year. I mean, we, this system done tomorrow, and this is where Councilmember Kaplan and I, I mean, from being school board trustees and inputting student data into systems and our constant, you know, what we used to do, our constant changing of dashboards, like, we've got to make sure that the system is up and running tomorrow. I mean, that's the most important thing that we can do.
Well, why's it taken till the end of 2023? Why can't these beds get into coordinated access now?
It's just a matter of training the providers and getting them ready. And so this, let me just qualify one thing here, too, though. It's not as if there are beds available. These programs are full. They're just having folks access these beds, not through a coordinated process. So I do want to make sure that it's clear that, that there isn't limited to no availability in your shelter system right now. This is showing which ones are going through a coordinated process with better prioritization and preference and, and, and coordination. But your capacity as a system, you are at capacity, even without them being in coordinated access.
City manager, can we make it a requirement in our procurement process and RFP process to make sure that every single provider or anyone that's receiving money on homelessness, like, is in the system and following everything?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, like a deadline?
Yes.
As soon as possible. Okay.
And what you see here is largely your locally funded shelters on the front page here.
I don't know what the appropriate deadline is, and I'd like to be able to work with the providers to see what that looks like, but to include it in the contract is very straightforward as a condition.
Why don't we make that, we'll make that a quick report back.
Laney says, yes, it's easy.
Yeah.
It's in the contracts now, apparently.
Okay. Sounds good. If we were to ask you to, like, focus all your team's energy into the system, how soon do you think you can get this done? Because at the end of the year, it makes me worried.
Well, I'd be happy to work with your city staff, county staff, and our team in 211 to, you know, to, hopefully, we can meet or exceed these dates here. And certainly, your request for urgency is, is noted. And I think that we have demonstrated pretty quick turnaround right now on the family shelters. That's been expedited, so hopefully, these other ones can go much, much more quickly as well.
Thank you.
I just follow up on this point here, just before we lose it. So what you're saying is even if we get in these beds into coordinated access from 603 to 1,354, that the beds are currently full, so that doesn't necessarily create additional access, right?
It, it hopefully will, over time, create better efficiency, which will help with your capacity.
Over time, but in order for there to be openings in any of those additional beds, the people living in there now are going to have to move into some sort of transitional or permanent housing, correct?
Correct. Or be, or in some other way, find housing.
But this is not a panacea in terms of additional capacity?
At some point, it would be wonderful if we could come back to you with the broader coordinated access system. This is one piece of it. There is also in our reports a lot of information about how we are building out the problem-solving and diversion resources so that as we see people coming in needing housing or sheltering, we're able to divert. So that's helping with your inflow, which, again, creates more capacity for your shelters. And we're increasing case conferencing and navigation services. So I think your front door as a coordinated access system has other components to it besides the shelter capacity. So just would love to be able to share how, you know, this is starting to build a, a more comprehensive system to address our unsheltered.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Jennings and city manager on the queue, but I think you're going to go later, correct? Are you, okay. So then let's get to Councilmember Valenzuela. You weren't done, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. I apologize. Sorry.
It's okay. Okay. All righty. And then I'm assuming everyone in this room read the UC San Francisco report. That's the city of Sacramento participated in. So I do want to discuss that. There are economic factors that have contributed to our homeless crisis for years and years on, including housing affordability, the rising cost of living overall, and that most respondents said $300 would have made a difference. $950 was the average monthly income claimed, but the median rent in downtown Sacramento is $1,300. And I could tell you that I'm trying to help someone find an apartment in Chico right now, and I'm having a hard time helping him because it's just so hard to navigate these systems to find something that's relatively affordable with someone that's working. So, you know, for years, people have been screaming and shouting that the rents are high and, like, what are we doing as a city of Sacramento? And absolutely not enough to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. We have a lot of working homeless in Sacramento right now, living in their cars, which is unacceptable. I mean, there's a lot of conversations right now about how much people get paid, and, you know, people are saying, "Hey, I need help. I don't want to be homeless, and I am working 40, 50 hours a week." We're also not doing enough on prevention with our seniors and our growing population on social security. I know Councilmember Lilly and I are also saying, like, hey, what can we do to prevent our seniors? And that's where we need to work with the county and SHRA and our affordable housing advocates to help prevent our seniors from becoming homeless. They're our most vulnerable population right now. Let's prevent the problem before it becomes the problem. But housing alone will not address our current homeless crisis. So I do want to bring the county up to see if you can help talk to us about both drug rehabilitation and mental health services and how DCR can access these resources also in real time.
Thanks. So with me today, I have a few people from the county, so as you ask questions, I might pull up various partners. Tim Lutz is our Director of Health Services, which includes our Behavioral Health Department, so he can talk a little bit and bring up some of his team members if necessary to answer more specific questions.
Good afternoon. I'm again Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. So specifically on county behavioral health side... So specifically on county behavioral health side, and I think that was the question of what we're doing to assist. So the county staffed up its HART team. We've been actively filling all positions down to three or in background. That leaves us one vacant position within our HART team. That coresponds with DCR, coresponds with our outreach partners, navigators, again, specifically targeting our encampments, shelters, trying to link individuals to services, get them engaged in treatment. The experience on the ground with that is it takes a lot of, a lot of a lift to develop the rapport, the engagement, to get people wanting to engage in services. And that's what our HART team's primary focus is, is how do we create those linkages, get them connected to our overall service delivery? The county also operates 11 core centers. Those core centers, and we're opening our 11th core center in coming months, that is specifically downtown. The goal of that is really provide a location for people to come into. We have our wellness center, but importantly, engagement with substance use treatment services, behavioral health services at all levels of acuity that they need on an outpatient basis. And most recently, the Board of Supervisors approved additional navigator positions that are going to be housed out of those core centers to do outreach.
Real quick, are there open spots for residential treatment?
Residential, like substance use treatment? Right now, there actually is not a waitlist for residential treatment beds. And that, and I will say, if you had asked me that question a year ago, it probably would have been 100, give or take. Our staff, over the last year, have really worked diligently to bring that down, recognizing that there's an acute need. And so right now, as of today, we have not had a waitlist.
All righty, well, and what about, so no waitlist right now? And people can stay there?
You're talking about substance use residential treatment, yes. Now, again, that varies on any given day. You know, recognizing that we want more capacity, we just put out a new capacity building set of awards, trying to build out additional substance use treatment. But right now, there isn't. Our concern, if I'm being perfectly honest, is there has been a perception for quite a long time that there's no, if someone wants to come into residential treatment, there's not an option. So people aren't making referrals, people aren't even trying. We've been starting to message availability. My concern is, we do that too quickly, we overwhelm the system, and we start to see a waitlist.
So what capacity do you have?
You know, I'd have to go back. I apologize, I wasn't prepared to come with capacity numbers. I'd be happy to follow up on that, though.
Yeah, that would be wonderful if you can follow up with us, just because, I mean, our impact team, I mean, I had a situation with a former neighbor of mine that, whose son needed help, and then I tried navigating the system, too, and I had a hard time, and then he went left, and he came back home, and it's like, when people will say, yes, I want help, I need help right now, like, let's give them that help now.
Ready for treatment, go now.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Not done yet, colleagues, sorry. And that's the thing, I mean, all our systems are so interconnected, you're good, thank you. You know, from the state with reentry services, moving people out of parkways and not placing them in shelters, and putting that undue burden on our lower-income community, I see that directly. I know I asked last time about the river, Bannon Island being cleared out, and then they came on the other side on River Plaza, and then they moved into my Bannon Creekway Parkway, and it's not helping because we're not giving them somewhere to go. Or even our police impact team not having capacity to create a real case against people supplying our unhoused population with fentanyl or whatever it is that they, that they're doing. And that's where I hope the county and the city's partnership agreement really does play a role in drug rehabilitation, mental health services, prevention, also just, like, really partnering together. I have seen county behavioral teams off of the Woodlake area when I'm driving home, so thank you for that. But at the end of the day, people need wraparound services because moving people is not going to help, and we need housing. And that's where us as elected officials, we've got to take ownership of this, and we all play a role in this, prior leaderships, our current leadership, and we've got to do better. So I'll stop for now.
So I know I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela, but I just want to follow up on this last train of questioning with the county, if I might. And, you know, we're transparent, and I think I'd like to give the public and my colleagues a little better sense of what gets talked about in the four, in the so-called four-by-two meetings, because it's important. We are not in dispute, we're working well together, we're launching together, and so this is all in the spirit of constructive partnership, but it's also real in terms of culture and philosophy. The agreement says that the county will provide as many full-service partnerships as are necessary to meet the need. So I was going back through Dr. Couche's UCSF report, and again, if it is consistent with the Sacramento numbers, which I believe it is, especially since Sacramento participated, here's what it says. 87% of the people living on our streets chronically homeless suffer from a serious mental illness. 31% have attempted suicide. 12% suffer from hallucinations. And that doesn't even account for, as Councilmember Talamontes alluded to a moment ago, the fentanyl issue or people addicted to substance abuse. And so one of the things we discussed in the four-by-two is who is eligible for a full-service partnership as these outreach teams move out into, move into these encampments to engage with people. And there are several issues which I would like to discuss here. Number one, what does it actually take to enroll somebody in a full-service partnership, which is, which is the wraparound service model? Can they be enrolled in services from the encampment itself? And if not, how long does it actually take from that engagement with the individual in the encampment to actually wrapping ourselves around them? That's number one. Number two, what is the county's definition of who is eligible? And I know it's subjective and based on diagnosis, but really, my view is that if someone is chronically homeless for a long time, they meet the definition. I don't need a UCSF study to know it. Our constituents know it, by the way. They know it. But what is the county's interpretation of who will be eligible and who will be, and who will not be eligible? Third, and this is one that is a recurring discussion, does full-service partnership include shelter, manufactured housing, or housing of any kind? I'm going to turn it over to our friend Siobhan and to have this discussion. But I also want to say to you, from a state perspective, everyone who is following this, is the governor has just put out his revised Mental Health Services Act proposal. I'm fully in support of it, as the original author of the measure, because what it seeks to do is provide more specificity about how counties have to spend this MHSA money. A billion dollars or 30% a year for housing, housing and housing support specifically for people living in the encampments, including shelter. 30% for enhanced full-service partnerships that are focused much more on people living in the encampments. Because I will tell you, and it's not accusatory, and it's not just Sacramento County, this is the truth. Counties throughout California are not using their MHSA dollars to focus on this population. They're not. Now, you can cite, and other counties will cite, individual instances, No Place Like Home, some money from MHSA into outreach. This population is not the focus, current focus, of the county's MHSA dollars. And the partnership agreement uses full-service partnership as the requirement. And will, in fact, there be a connection between that requirement, these dollars, which are growing, it's now over $4 billion statewide, and what you're hearing from our community, all the suffering in our community, and what you're hearing from my colleagues here today, that's really important. And if we can't have that honest conversation, we have it in private as partners, as friends, but we need to have it publicly as well, because Councilmember Talamontes, your questions will not be answered to satisfaction unless and until we have that conversation. And unless and until we come to a point that says that, that what's happening in urban Sacramento, it's also happening in the unincorporated areas as well, of course, is of such a, is a crisis of such magnitude that more of those dollars and more of those FSPs need to be for the people who are living in these encampments, without making it so difficult to qualify for an FSP or to, or take too much time and bureaucracy to actually get people started with the help and treatment they need, and including shelter and housing. So I'd like to open up that conversation with the county, because that may be as important as whatever the good presentation you were going to make is.
Great, thank you. So, and as I let Howard and Mario know, if you want us to come back and present this more fully with some data, we're happy to do that. I'll just say a few overarching comments, and then I want to bring up Monica Roca Wyatt, who leads our HART team, so she can walk through the process and enrollment in FSPs and what that looks like and how many folks we're enrolling and engaging with. But I did want to say that with our Mental Health Services Act dollars, the county has made significant investments. I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, we'll bring that back in a workshop, in housing, in Home Key projects, No Place Like Home, and other types of permanent supportive housing units run by our partners at SHRA. Additionally, we just found out Friday, we received an additional $43 million in a grant that the team wrote around behavioral health bridge housing. That'll help us to build out some more capacity, which is wonderful. We definitely have FSP capacity. I think people often think that we don't enroll people in FSPs because we don't want to spend the money or because we don't have the capacity, and that is not accurate. We do have FSP capacity. And in fact, the way behavioral health dollars flow is we can draw down a lot of that money from the federal government, and we take full advantage of drawing down that money and leveraging our local dollars so that we can draw down more. So I just wanted to say, we have room in the FSP programs, and we've continued to build specialized FSPs for folks, such as folks who have been involved with the criminal justice system. I can go over some higher-level sort of program things, but let me bring Monica up to talk a little bit about what they're doing on the ground with the DCR teams first.
Again, and Monica, as you come up, and by the way, you do a great job, and I really do appreciate, you know, you're on the ground, you're really doing it. As you're coming up, I want you to think about this question in addition, please. How many chronically homeless people in the City of Sacramento are currently in full-service partnerships?
I would have to get back to you on that, but a good portion were formerly chronically homeless people.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I said, I would have to get back to you on that. Okay, exact data.
Any estimate?
I can tell you right now, at Project Room Key, that we're helping to ramp down. We've linked 20 individuals to outpatient treatment, six of them to full-service partnerships. Of the 50, we linked two full-service partnerships in our codeployments with our DCR partners. 50 of those have been linked, 25 of those are housed, 14 of them are being actively engaged. There are a few that were exited from shelters that we're trying to locate, so a good portion of them. I would say about 25% of the folks we linked in our efforts with the DCR have been to full-service partnerships. I was lucky to have been a baby therapist in a full-service partnership and monitored full-service partnerships, so I can kind of see it from both ends. I'm privileged to oversee and support our homeless engagement and response team. This is a collection of clinicians and peer staff, so this is folks with lived experience with substance abuse, homelessness, et cetera, and they all have a strong desire to help this population. So as you know, we do go out and we engage folks. Imagine going to somebody's home for the first time. That's what we do when we show up at an encampment. We're like a solicitor practically. So we need to gain your trust, we need to build your rapport. We've discovered addressing more immediate needs really helps that conversation, like, where can I go to a food bank? How can I get my diabetes medication? On average, it takes three to six engagements for somebody to even just agree to be screened for our services. As you can imagine, experiencing homelessness, folks experience a lot of stigma and, quite frankly, just a lot of prejudice, so it's a difficult conversation for them to have. But when they do have that conversation, we are actively listening for risk factors and things that make us concerned about their ability to navigate the world. There are folks experiencing homelessness who can kind of navigate the world. They can get to a food bank, they can follow up with their CalWorks case manager, they can get a free phone, and then there's the folks that you're seeing struggle taking care of themselves. These are folks with untreated medical conditions who have a lot of difficulty following up with their medical care. These are folks that have been on our system before but didn't seem successful at lower levels of care, so we know we've tried a lower level and that didn't work. Any indication of homicidal or suicidal ideation obviously merits a deeper screening and a consideration for full-service partnership. We're also looking for recent hospitalizations or history hospitalizations, severe trauma, the folks that are really struggling to get by. Like I said, a lot of folks experiencing homelessness are incredibly resourceful, and we can see them get by day to day. When I did the weather response, I saw people getting up to go to work. And then there's the folks that are actively symptomatic, and obviously, we assess and we do refer to full-service partnerships. Once you are referred to a full-service partnership, my team has the ability to immediately get on their little tablet or laptop and enroll you in that program. And when you're in a full-service partnership, my clinicians can go straight to the contract monitors and leadership of those programs to ensure a warm handoff. This is the person...
Question again?
Yes.
So we don't know how many people are enrolled in full-service partnerships?
Oh, that I could get for you. I had been asked about chronically.
Chronically homeless. Okay.
Yeah, chronically homeless. I would think over, well over 1,000, right? Yeah, 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 no. We're not at capacity, there are still available slots, and there's well over 1,000. Our FSPs have been growing.
Okay.
And then, once that person gets connected, my team is available to help that person navigate, because we do have that rapport already. That full-service partnership can reach out to us, and we'll meet them out in the field and make sure, like, hey, this is your new consumer, this is their needs, this is their housing needs. Another thing my team does, again, with our codeployment partners, we assess that person for where they are in homeless definition, which impacts what kind of housing opportunities are available to them. For our full-service partnerships, as you know, we do have investments in MHSA and No Place Like Home housing units, and obviously, those folks are fast-tracked for those openings. There's quite a few properties leasing up currently, there's a little bit of some construction delay, but we're actively searching out these opportunities where we think these people might be congregating. Like I said, Project Room Key is a big piece right there. We're dealing with that, and we also do one-offs. So we do our encampment codeployments with our city partners, our county partners, but we also take referrals from concerned community members about family, friends, and neighbors, and we will go out and do outreach to those folks, too. Again, people have to want services, and we don't give up very easily, so sometimes we'll loop back around and have that conversation again, and sometimes you just need to plant that seed, and the next time you visit, they're open to that conversation. But my team stays really, really busy.
I just have a quick follow-up question, and thank you so much for all the information. This is really helpful for me, too. So I think you mentioned a connection to housing services for those in the FSPs. For those, for everyone who needs connection to housing right now in FSP, are they able to get it, or are you looking because you have people who need it who aren't able to find it right now?
Great question, which made me realize I forgot a very important point. All levels of care in our system, whether full-service partnership or not, do get rapid rehousing services when they qualify. So this includes rent gap, security deposit, utility arrears, housing navigation, support with applications, and getting yourself document ready. We do have access to units. We also use our MHSA funding to help support people in just regular market rate or a room and board or a board and care, whichever is the best fit for them. The biggest challenge we have with housing is finding affordable housing and finding landlords that are willing to take a, take a chance with us. So that's the biggest concern. As far as what we have built, no problem filling that, it's the additional housing that we need.
Councilmember Valenzuela's been very patient. Thank you.
I'll ask you a couple of follow-up questions.
I'll ask you a couple of follow-up questions, if that's okay. So I appreciate the services that are offered for housing under FSPs, but it doesn't sound like, like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't sound like 100% of people who are enrolled in FSPs have housing. Like maybe they're getting services to try to find housing, but there is a gap between those who have FSPs and housing services.
There may be on occasion, and it's usually because people have preferences about where they'll be placed. As you can imagine, it can take a moment to find something more permanent, so we're always looking for something in between, that bridge housing that we've applied for, and we have to respect folks' preferences. There are folks that will not take the options we offer them because they can't bring pets or it's not in a neighborhood that's conducive to them or where their support system is. And those services are offered to our full-service partnerships and our core outpatient programs also, all have that rapid rehousing model. And the biggest obstacle we encounter is finding affordable housing.
Yeah, so I guess then to rephrase, based on what I'm hearing you say, that the only people on FSPs who don't have housing are people who are choosing not to take advantage of the housing options that are being offered. Everybody else has housing who's enrolled.
Yes, I would say 99% of the time. Room and boards are the most common option and hotels, and a lot of folks don't want to live congregantly with others. Other folks already have, you know, their life set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to respect people's preferences, we can't obligate them.
And I think I heard you say a number, so I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. You said that there's 1,000 FSPs?
Oh, no.
Sorry. Or 1,000 chronically unhoused people who are in full-service partnerships?
We will also follow up with that firm number. I mean, again, I want to say it's about 1,400, but I want to.
1,400 people enrolled?
It's total slots.
Oh, total slots.
Enrollment numbers.
Okay.
We're always trying to make sure we have excess enrollment numbers.
Yeah.
Again, funding isn't the limiter there, it's people who we can put into the program, but we can follow up with that.
So when you say there's open slots, that's within that 1,400 number?
So, yeah, we would have a contractor that has capacity to take on additional FSPs. We just need to get somebody, you know, particularly in the case of our unsheltered folks agreeing to that FSP.
Sorry, I'm trying to detangle. This is your area of expertise, so I guess if I keep rephrasing to make sure I'm understanding, then that's fine. So you have slots available, but there is no service provider for them and that's why they're available?
We have slots available because we, there isn't, in the case of an unsheltered person willing to go into the FSP and all the requirements that go along with that.
Okay.
So we have a provider, we have a contract. It's getting the person agreeing to enroll and engage in that level of, of treatment and services.
Okay, so when you mentioned providers signing up, that's about expanding beyond that 1,400 number?
Yes.
So how many could you do? Because I mean, when I hear the mayor talk about 87% of people on the street struggling with mental illness, which isn't a shock, you know, they're being victimized, they're not sleeping, there's all sorts of stuff going on, could you expand to, I mean, we assume there's, let's do a round number, 10,000 people on the street, could we get to 8,700 FSPs?
I mean, in, in theory, I'd have to go back to see cost per FSP on how many total dollars we get. I, I think that the challenge we run into, and going back to discussions around Mental Health Service Act modernization, is there are trade-offs. We, we definitely don't disagree, we, as many people as want FSPs, we should be having these spots, but if we were to go to that theoretical total number of unsheltered people, 10,000, recognizing that MHSA dollars are committed to a myriad of other community providers and there are limited funds, we would have to look at how do we reduce in, you know, name your, your service area, whether it's prevention, early intervention funding that we've built up over the last 20 years, or some other type of a program to prioritize those services. So it, there's, there's the budget trade-off. Right now, we've been able to continue to grow those slots based on funding coming in, but to dramatically increase it, to, to your example, would have trade-offs or repercussions in terms of our other service delivery.
Okay, so if you were going to go beyond 1,400, you would need to start looking to where to pull that money from and other mental health.
Yeah, and I do want to come back with you to give you firm numbers on total FSP and recognizing that we, you know, try and be able to build that capacity, but yeah, if we're looking at a significant increase of your example of, say we're at 1,400 today and go into 8,000 tomorrow.
Yeah.
We don't have the budgetary resources it would end up being, having to take from other providers to, to fund those up.
I think that's a key question for the four by two and for us, because obviously, that's the scale of the issue that we're seeing in our community, and so that is, we'll put a pin in that since you're going to follow up with numbers. I want, while you're up here, I would like to follow up on your discussion about the substance abuse treatment beds, if we could, because not that long ago, I want to say it was within the last two years, maybe it was a year, I had somebody at the county tell me that there was almost 600 people waiting for substance abuse residential treatment. And so did that number go down?
Significantly.
Because we called them and they, we couldn't find them again, or did that number go down because we built 600 more beds?
We did not build 600 more beds.
Okay.
And go, I think to my, to my comment on right now, we don't because I think some people have stopped trying.
Yeah.
So we recognize, we are still building more capacity.
Okay.
And just because we don't have a waitlist today doesn't mean there isn't an unmet need and we recognize that. The, the key for us was, let's start to make sure we have that pipeline together, get people, you know, in a bed if they're ready to go to that bed and.
Okay, so we think some of that 600 are folks who just dropped off and we couldn't get in touch with again potentially.
Correct.
Like if that was correct. Okay, so how many total beds are we talking about right now?
And that's why I, I will.
So that's another, but if you ballpark it, is it less than 1,000, is it?
It is less than 1,000. Remember that this is for the Medi-Cal population, there's a lot of, there's a lot of private pay beds that are out there.
Okay.
And our target when, when we brought in the RAND study, they identified about 150 beds that we needed on substance use.
Okay.
And that's what our, our target is. I know through this new infrastructure round from the state, one of our community providers just was awarded funding for 200 additional beds. Granted, it has to be built, brought to capacity, but the goal is, we want to make sure we're addressing what was that identified shortage or gap within the RAND study.
Okay. Oh, you have a question?
And so our DCR team has access to these beds?
Absolutely, our DCR team through our, our HART team, absolutely.
Sean, do you want?
Yeah, I just want to add, because I think it can be confusing sometime, the number, when we talk about slots and numbers and, you know, when we talk about residential treatment for substance use, for instance, these programs are 30 or 60 or 90 days, so you think about the throughput and folks coming through the program and then hopefully being exited into lower levels of care, but supportive care, right? And then also, when you think about FSPs, not everyone stays in an FSP forever and ever, some people do, some people need that forever and ever, some people don't, some people actually go down to a lower level of care, they still stay involved in specialty mental health services. As the mental health plan, which the county is, we are required to provide a mandated cadre of services, and so I think what Tim was really speaking to is, we will always meet our mandates when it comes to providing those mandated services when we have to make budget choices. So if some of our, you know, if, if we do ramp up in one area, that's when the nice-to-haves start to have to fall by the wayside. But the county is definitely committed to meeting our mandates and enrolling people in specialty mental health care who are eligible for that is one of our mandates.
Well, I would love, I mean, since we're putting pins in information that we get from the county, which would be really helpful, an idea of capacity, like total capacity and available beds would be super helpful.
Absolutely.
Along that spectrum, right?
Yes.
Because it's one thing to say, hey, here's a 30-day treatment, oh, oops, there's nothing on the other side, and so what, I would love to get, maybe it's an easy visual of like a flowchart of like, oh, when you go through this step, now you're getting referred here, just so we have an idea of what we're talking about in terms of capacity.
Absolutely.
And, and while you're up here, I want to follow up briefly, sorry, I'm going to, I did not intend to ask the county this many questions, but you just keep giving me more things to go off of. So when you talk about trade-offs for Mental Health Services Act funding, I know there was, and I am not the expert that the mayor is, and so I'm going to let him interrupt me if I start to go too off the rails, I believe there was a conversation about $13 million in surplus reserve funds that the county had for MHSA. Did that get spent down or is that still on the books?
So the $13 million, roughly $13 million, is our mandated prudent reserve. We are required to have $13 million in reserves based on our level of funding.
Is that a state mandate or a federal mandate?
That's a state mandate.
Okay.
It was part of the act. In addition to that, though, we have a, an amount of money that is obligated to be spent out in contracts over time. So sometimes it looks like we have a surplus, but we may have a three-year contract with a provider to do FSPs, let's say, or some other program, so it's obligated money to be spent down. But we are on track not to have that surplus pretty soon because we have ramped up the number of services we do unless MHSA keeps growing, and it has grown over time, it's been a really reliable funding source, unless it keeps growing. But we know with the new behavioral health modernization, we're going to have to do some shifts in terms of the money that's now going to be sort of restricted towards housing for the unhoused. That'll make us have to do some movement within that pot, but the $13 million is a mandated state prudent reserve.
Okay. So I guess my last question for the county, because you alluded to phasing down the Room Key programs, which are two hotels for members of the public, sheltering about 200 people, I think at the height of its use, it was open during COVID, it's now ramping down. I know it was mentioned, the phased-out plan, and so I want to ask a specific version of the question, because I heard a lot about like contacts and people going into, you know, all the different steps. How many people exiting are going into housing versus shelter beds versus unknown?
Great, let me introduce Emily Halken, who some of you know, our Director of Homeless Services and Housing.
Welcome back, Emily.
Thank you. Yeah, Emily Halken, Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. So Councilmember Valenzuela, I don't have the exact number, we do track them. Right now, the last report I saw, which I think was a couple of days ago, is the Vagabond Inn, which is the first one to close, had about 20 people remaining, but everybody has an exit plan at the Vagabond. That could be transferring over to the Comfort Inn, because we have a little bit more time on that. Many of them have exited to other shelters or housing, we're partnering with SHRA and prioritizing a lot of folks who already were sitting on vouchers. So for the Vagabond, which is the first one closing, everybody is exiting to something that is safer and inside. Our next step is with the Comfort Inn, which has about 108 rooms, I believe, we are simultaneously working on exit plans for them, but I can definitely get you the data. It's obviously, over time, has shifted. At the height of COVID, the exits looked very different than they do today, but we are really diligently working with Next Move, with the Housing Authority, with SSF, to ensure that everybody has at least two offers of a shelter or housing option. Obviously, if they don't take it, then we help support them in a, in a safe transition, but it is our goal that everybody has a safe landing place.
That would be really great information to have, because Vagabond is in my district, as, as you know, and I'm really anxious about the fact that folks are essentially leaving Vagabond to go into a shelter bed that could have potentially been used for somebody who's unsheltered right now. And that's some, a number that I, I would just love to see, like the postmortem on this. Obviously, I'd love to keep the hotels open, but that decision's been made by the board, so I guess that, that would be helpful to include in the data follow-up from your team here.
Definitely happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
So I guess, I'm preaching a lot, I'm asking a lot of these specific questions, because I just want to say, especially to the members of the public watching and who are still here, that I think, I feel pretty confident speaking for all of my colleagues, that if we could say tomorrow that every person on the street would have some place to go and that we'd be able to provide immediate relief to businesses and residents, that we would, right? I don't think, I feel totally out of bounds by saying, if we could say that tomorrow, that we would, that we would not hesitate. The really question is, can we? It's not if we want to, it's can we? And that can really comes down to these capacity questions, right? Like if we don't have a place to take somebody, we see, a lot of what we see, when you see that Christmas tree up there that highlights District 4 for 311 calls, which is, they got moved from this area, now they're over here, now they're on J Street because they've moved from over there, and that's not a sustainable solution, because all we're doing is passing people around to different parts of the district, as was said in public comment, we're hurting those people in the process, sometimes they're losing belongings, they're definitely not trusting us much better, which is certainly not going to help when we go circle back to say, hey, we have a bed for you now, because they're going to say, go kick rocks, right? Because you just moved me 10 times and I don't trust you anymore. So I guess, I just wanted to point that out, that these two things are inextricably linked, and us as a city, you know, like I said, tomorrow, if we could direct, you know, our team to say, let's open, like, we're getting ready to expand Miller Park, I'm thrilled about that. When Miller Park closed last winter, it was an absolute heartbreak because it was serving people well. Now we're getting ready not only to have it stay open, but to expand even more to serve more need, but that's still just 60 spots. You know, if it was up to me, we'd have 100 Miller Parks around the city, just helping triage the need and getting people something that they can start building relationships with case managers, because inevitably, the question keeps coming back to, where do we go? Where do people go? So I'm really proud, and I just want to make a note, because I know the P-bids we're here, are, are here still, of the partnerships that the city has built with a lot of the P-bids, and I just want to point that out, that like when businesses are talking about power washing and trash pickup, like the city helped fund that, and that's something that I think is really excellent and I really hope we can build on. I mean, the River District's program is actually employing people who are out on the streets or in shelters in the River District, and they're getting jobs and they're starting to get school training, and it's just showing all of this promise, and I think that partnership is working really well. But again, we're just managing, we're mitigating the situation, because like, we need a long-term strategy for how do we get that capacity, which is why I'm asking those questions, but in the meantime, what do we do? Because what we're hearing from our public and what we hear, I know our office, easily 90% of the constituent calls and emails we're dealing with, and we're frustrated. I mean, you all are frustrated, we're frustrated too. Imagine your experience times 100, because we're getting all of these inquiries from constituents and we're forced to tell them, I, I don't have anything I can do right now, I'm so sorry, like, let me try to connect you to this or that, whatever immediate resource, but there's just nothing. I would love to be able to say, like, DCR's coming out there tomorrow, we've got a shelter bed for them, like, we're going to get them someplace where they can get help, you know, like, that would be the dream for all of us. So I want to appreciate, because I know Councilmember Jennings alluded to a proposal that was to bring back, you know, how do we prioritize encampments and how do we mitigate encampments? And I want to thank the colleagues who worked on this, it looks like Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Kaplan and Councilmember Talamontes, because what I really like about this is it's broken into two spots, how do we prioritize encampments, and then what's the mitigation plan look like, which has been the question across the board, because we have people, like, I made burgers for the River District Clean and Safety Team a couple of weekends ago, and they were like, can you just put some porta-potties out here? You know, can you just, like, gosh, it would make it so much easier if we didn't have to keep finding this human waste and cleaning it up, if there was a place that people could go, we think we could work with them to use it. But then it comes back to that proverbial question, which is, well, where do we do that? Where do they go? I had a map that was given to me by some advocates, and I know you can't probably see this on the screen, but it's basically the critical infrastructure map that you put up, Mario, with private property layered on top of it. And to the people who say that private property trespass is not being enforced, please follow up with your council member, that should be enforced, private property is still, trespass is still something that we are fully within our legal rights to say, you can't be here, you're on somebody's property. But when you layer on private property to the critical infrastructure, what you end up seeing is, according to this, almost 80% of the city is off limits. So it really raises the question, because what I'm hearing from these outreach workers and what frankly, what I hear from unhoused individuals, is tell me where to go. You know, we just had this whole awful few months on 29th and 30th Street where folks were just, they were under the underpasses, which wasn't great, I get it, they were on Caltrans property, which wasn't great, I get it, but instead of finding a solution, they just kept getting moved up and down 29th Street, and then they ended up next to Planned Parenthood, which wasn't good, and now they're over next to a park and a soccer field, which also wasn't good, and you're hearing these folks be like, like, I, I would, I would go someplace if you told me, like, give me the point on the map that I can move my stuff to so that I don't have to keep moving every other week. And I'm hearing from the residents who are like pulling their house out, saying, is this really how we're using our resources, just moving people back and forth? So I want to applaud that, a part of this plan, because I think, what do we do now is sort of the sense of urgency that I feel. It's like, how do we, the trash pickup has been great, but what about the bathroom access? What about clean drinking water access? Where are those places that we can say, hey, you can go here? Because I'm glad that we're addressing these crisis areas, but like, when I think about someplace like Roseville Road and how horrific that was, and I don't think anybody would say that it wasn't a horrific place, there were kids living there at one point in time, there were families living there at one point in time, and I want to know where they went. I want to know where they went, because like, those were folks that were in a really bad situation that needed to be addressed, but now, like, we don't always know where they go. When I can't make us move to my district, I can usually find them pretty quickly, it's It's not hard. I go three blocks in any direction and I find them, but like, that's, we need to answer that question, and that's part of the call to action that I feel is, like, where do they go? We need to keep pushing on capacity, we need to keep working with the county. And if it's image, I say money, if it's another ballot, I don't know what it needs to be to say, hey, here's as much money as you need to get as many mental health and substance abuse, and so we can scale up services to get where we need to go. But that will take years at best. And so what do we do today to try to mitigate these encampments is the perpetual question. And then I want to lift up what Councilmember Talamontes said, because I read a number, and I'm going to let LaShelle give me a thumbs down if I get this number wrong. Some, I saw a number that, when we opened Marysall Village, it was a huge accomplishment. It's over 400 affordable units, that over 9,000 people applied for those units. She's nodding her head. Okay. I just want to say that again, just to get, like, super clear. We had 400, just over 400 affordable units and over 9,000 households applied for those 400 units. And just the other day, I was canvassing in my neighborhood Boulevard Park, and I know Dave left, but I met a 72-year-old woman. Her husband's died, the rent's gone up, she's not paying the full rent, she's paying what she can, and she's like, Katie, I know eventually this landlord's going to come by and say that I have to go. My husband passed away last October, I just can't make it work. There is no place. She's called every number, she's called every line, she's on every waitlist, she's 72 years old, and she's making plans to live in her car. She's making plans to try to figure out what's next for her, and that's unacceptable. So I don't want to lose the focus in keeping affordable housing and tenant protections and rentals in frame here, because when we really do think about, like, when I saw that report from San Francisco, I think my social media post was, in other news, water is wet. Like, of course, affordable housing is connected to homelessness. You know, if you have people making this much salary and housing is costing this much, then inevitably, you have this growing crisis where people are saying, hey, wait a minute. Like, we heard with healthcare workers, healthcare workers, for crying out loud, were in this chamber just last week, saying, I am living in my car, I am working 40, 50, 60-hour weeks, I do not have any place to go. Please help us make enough money so that we can afford these rents. Like, this is inextricably, and I know it's beyond the scope of this conversation, but I just wanted to lift up Councilmember Talamontes's point and the mayor's point about affordable housing, because I just don't see how we get out of it. However, to circle back to the conversation at hand, I really want to lift up this proposal in terms of the mitigation. How do we prioritize and how do we mitigate? I think those two things go hand in hand. You know, how do we, because to me, the mitigation question ultimately comes down to the where. Where can we put porta potties? Where can we do that work so that we can say, hey, yes, you can't be here because you're blocking a sidewalk, or you're in front of a school, or you're someplace that we, we don't think is a good place, but here's where you can go, and so that we can start working on compliance in a different way, so.
Well said.
That's my ramble.
Thank you. No, it was not, it was not a ramble. Good reminder, good reminder about the housing crisis. No question. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Maple a minute, but I want to finish this MHSA conversation because it's important. And, but I want to start with Mario Lara, actually, for a foundational question before I get to Shavon. Your PowerPoint presentation, and in your presentation, you described essentially a triage approach for how the city prioritizes encampments, right? And you listed on one of the pages here, the hottest of hotspots in the city, Roseville Road, et cetera, okay? What's that?
The WX.
WX, of course. My question, and I guess I should know this, but I don't, is the prioritization the same for the partnership agreement outreach as it is for the sidewalk and private property and other enforcement priorities? Is it the same outreach, or are they two separate approaches to bringing our DCR code enforcement, county mental health workers out to these encampments?
So when DCR does the prioritization, does the assessments, right? They have a list, like, currently, they have about 27 encampments that have, they have assessed to be a level-one priority.
Right.
Those are the ones that get priority for the city-county teams. Of those, 10 of them right now are being, we have city-county teams going to those encampments. The sidewalk ordinance, if the sidewalk violations and the critical infrastructure violations, those are kind of like your daily routine items. A lot of those gets referred. You know, DCR teams will go and do the initial contacts, but if they're not part of those 27, the list of ones that have been assessed level-one priorities, then they get treated as a, as a.
And in order to get to more priority sites, the 27-plus, it would require more.
It could increase our team, yeah.
It would require more resources. Okay. I'm sorry, one more second here. How many teams, how many city-county teams are currently operational?
I want to make sure I have the latest information on that, and I would ask either Monica or Ben to update, give an update on that.
Four?
Four teams.
Four teams, four full teams. One of the things I know that I want to ask the city manager going forward, under his city manager's report, Mr. Davis will be happy, I think, is, is, sorry, is to report every single week on where, how many city-county encampment engagement teams are operational, where they are spending their week or two weeks, what they're doing, we know what they're doing, but where geographically they are focused, and the Lisa Bates question around how many available beds are accessible to us, either through coordinated access or on our own, as that outreach is occurring? That basic information every single week, I think it'll go a long way, actually, towards being able to allow the council and the community to know exactly how this partnership agreement's being operational. So that's one. So now let me get back to the county, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Maple. I think that, I love that Councilmember Valenzuela kind of, you know, put out an aggressive number here, did the, did the 87% thing, right? Well, I just want to say, I guess I'm not the most aggressive member of the council because I don't have no expectation that there's going to be 8,700 full-service partnerships, okay? Understandable, right? We got a lot, that's a lot. But I think what we do, what the expectation is, at least from this governing body, and certainly for me, for the mayor, is that as these partnership teams increase from four to six to eight to 10, as we're clear in a transparent way where we're focused geographically, that we see a dramatic ramp up of the number of people being enrolled in full-service partnerships. That's, that's really what we need. It needs to be in the hundreds. I mean, it, over the next months, it really does. And then, you know, if it's 1,400 plus, well, then it's going to need to get beyond three figures over the course of time. If this, if this agreement is really going to bring the kind of results that, that we want to see, that we all want to see. The other thing I would emphasize that never gets mentioned in the partnership agreement is that the county also agreed, it's not just voluntary compliance, that's the coin of the realm, and that's what we want, but we're obligated together, with you and the lead on the service end, to use any of the involuntary tools to get people off the streets. We want people out of these encampments. It's not all on you, but to the degree we're dealing with people with mental health issues who are noncompliant or not willing to engage in services, I know Care Court doesn't kick in the county until 2024, but this is another part of the strategy here, so it can't be just, you touch six times and they don't want the services and you move on. We have an obligation to diagnose those, that person, and do whatever it takes to get them off the street. And then finally, we must resolve this issue of shelter and housing, because you can't provide an effective full-service partnership for people if they're outdoors. Can't do it. And so whose obligation is it to go beyond the partnership agreement's 200 shelter beds that we're working on together to add to the system? And we're working together on how we deploy the governor's 350 manufactured homes at various sites and all that. But the real question that's being begged here by all of us is, how together are we going to increase safe ground? How are we going to increase more shelter beyond what the county already has planned? Because a lot of that is for your folks in the unincorporated area as well. And so the obligation here, and this is where we might have a disagreement, but is to see FSP as whatever it takes, including shelter and housing, and to not, I'm not saying you do it all, because we are in partnership, but to say that we've got to do that together. We all know it's taking some time for the inventory from the state to come through, right? We know it's taking some time to perfect the couple sites that we're working on, and I've asked the question, the four-by-two, and you know, I know I'm a pest, I know that I am, but I, I say, we've got to get several hundred additional beds up now. And so the city manager, you know, has agreed, to go back to Councilmember Valenzuela's original idea, we're going to do 60 tenths at Miller Park. Wonderful. That's 60 tenths in San Diego, as they're considering some harder enforcement measures? Todd Gloria, the mayor down there, I know it's a different system and all that, and they're going to open up 600, 600 safe ground sites to coincide with their increased enforcement. I, I don't, we're nowhere near that. To the private sector, all of you out there, sites for safe ground that can be easily administered or warehouses for sheltering people in a way that doesn't create a huge cost to the city and or the county. That's the only way we're going to be able to join enforcement with being able to offer people something. So FSPs, please. And then we're going to have to resolve together whether FSPs include shelter and housing, we believe they do. And secondly, regardless how it is, we get more bed capacity while we're waiting for these longer-term solutions. Councilmember Maple, thank you for your patience.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start out with a few questions and then, and then go into my comments. So our first couple of questions are actually for Ms. Bates, if you, if you wouldn't mind. First of all, thank, thank you for your work. I was talking to someone recently who is familiar with Sacramento's Outboard, and they helped educate me on the amount of time it takes to actually, like, train up an organization to input the information and make sure they're doing it right, so that you're not spending a lot more time on the, on the tail end of things, trying to fix things. And so I do appreciate that, you know, you've limited resources and staff and the work that you have done, and I know we're hopefully on track to do that in a, in a timely fashion. I know also, in addition to the work that you've done on the coordinated access system, you're also leading the charge on, on the OLHAP, the Local Homelessness Action Plan. I was afraid I was going to miss an act, one of those letters. And I think that that's a really important work, too, because, you know, we have to be strategic in what we're doing. We can't, you know, obviously, if we, in the past, we've operated more in silos than we do now. We're working better in partnership than ever before, and that's wonderful. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're only ever, just like with any major problem, we need to make sure that we're working backwards from goal and being strategic about how we're using those resources. So I think the OLHAP is great. One of the questions that I have about that work is, have, have you or we done some kind of gaps analysis that kind of looks at, you know, not just our current population under the pit count, but our projected unhoused population, unsheltered, and, you know, our need for beds, beds slash housing? Like, do we know kind of what the delta is?
So there is a gaps analysis that has been completed based on the last point-in-time count, as well as just general HMIS data. We have approximated what is the capacity needed for a fully transformed system. So what I think you're asking for is how much shelter capacity maybe do we need in the current system? That might be what you're asking. So that gaps analysis did not calculate that, but there has been some work to try and approximate more what would we need in the current state while, as the mayor mentioned, we are moving to a, hopefully, a transformed state where we have a much better ability to manage our inflow, and then we have more options for positive exits, which would be housing, as Councilmember Valenzuela's articulated so well. So, you know, that is something that we can continue to work on if a desire comes out of this as a request from us, is what would be current needs in current state versus transformed state.
And so I understand the public, so transformed state meaning?
What we're able to address, in a fully transformed state, we would have more prevention services, more housing resources, so that your response to homelessness would not need to be as robust as it is currently. So right now, we're in very much a response crisis mode, and where the system needs to move toward is one that, that is really making homelessness rare, one-time or brief occurrence, if at all. And so to get to that state requires much more investment on the front end and the back end.
Well, that's.
While we're also addressing the urgent need now.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, because it is, it is, you know, a push and pull, right? It's a give and take in that, you know, we have an urgent need, as you heard from the members of the public, as we, no doubt, my office, we're spending easily 90% of our time fielding calls and emails and complaints from constituents related to, you know, homeless, homelessness in general and encampments and so on. And so there's the urgent, but then there's also being strategic, right? Which is something that I really think is important, and thinking about what would it mean, what would prevention look like, and how do we make sure that we have the resources that would require, require us spending less over, on the, on the back end over time by investing more? So I really appreciate that. And on that note, my last question for you is, I think it was during our last council conversation related to homelessness, your organization gave a presentation to the county, and one of the statistics that came out of that was, for every one person that exits homelessness in Sacramento, approximately three enter, which was really alarming to me, and I, really made me stop in my tracks and just take it all in. And so one of the questions I have is, have, have we done research related to what are those preventative measures? Because we can talk all day about the need to get the current number of people into something, but if we're not stemming the flow of people entering into homelessness, I don't know how effective that will be.
Yes, so part of the gaps analysis does an estimate of what would we need in the way of prevention resources, number of bodies, financial assistance, number of outreach workers needed to help support a more robust prevention framework, such that we could start to make a dent in reducing potentially inflow. Obviously, inflow is impacted by the economy, the housing situation, but we have seen other communities, Santa Clara in particular, with really robust prevention framework, be able to significantly reduce their inflow, even in a tight housing market such as we have. So it is a cost-effective way, and, and one that's more trauma-informed, in that you're meeting the person much earlier in their episode of homelessness, or even before they become homeless. So the COC, with its HAP money, just recently augmented the, the resources that this council is investing with $6 million toward prevention resources, problem-solving resources, and expanding access points in our community with our community-based organizations. It's part of the Local Homelessness Action Plan as well, is one of the key strategies. And so we're really trying to help support building out that prevention framework. As you all are investing in sheltering and housing resources, the COC is, is looking to invest much more in the prevention framework. And as you mentioned, the three persons falling into homelessness or being addressed into our community for everyone that's housed, that necessitates a system response. So I appreciate your calling out the Local Homelessness Action Plan, because it is an integrated set of strategies where we are trying to move toward holding ourselves accountable with measurable targets and actions. I will just note that the city and the county, SHRA and the, and the COC hope to have the first quarter report to you all toward the end of July, beginning of August, probably for the Sacramento Homeless Policy Council meeting August 4th. So we're committed to that transparency and learnings about what is working and what is not, as we are working more collaboratively through the partnership agreement, through the Local Homelessness Action Plan, toward all of these things becoming more integrated and more effective in our response overall.
Thank you, and I appreciate your work on, on the OLHAP. And I, for one, I can speak for myself, I'm interested in a transformed state, because I think that it's not only a better use of our resources, it's better for people who are experiencing homelessness and those in our communities that are housed. So that, that's it for my questions for you. I do have a couple of questions for DCR, so maybe it's either Mario or Nick, whoever's the best person. Just around kind of, maybe, maybe it's Nick, because it's a day-to-day. Thanks, Nick.
Nick Golling, Homeless Services Manager with Department of Community Response.
Thank you. So one of, my first question was already answered, so I'm not going to ask that, but I did want to ask some specifics about how the day-to-day operations work, because it might be illuminating for not just my colleagues, but members of the public. I, I know the number of calls that you're responding to every single day, week, month, and the astronomical amount of work that's on the plate of you and your team. So one of the things that's been brought up is around, you know, people basically getting moved, and so I want, at the baseline level, if individuals are asked or made to move from a location due to enforcement of, whether it's the sidewalk ordinance, camping, or critical infrastructure, do we, as the city, provide any direction for where they can go, if, assuming that there's not a shelter space or other program available to them at that time?
We do not provide specific direction of spaces to go. If we, if, so long as we don't have somewhere that is reasonable or safe and stable that we can offer them.
So, you know, so as an example, if I'm camping on the WX corridor, I'm blocking a sidewalk, I'm asked, or sidewalk's not a great one, because I can move my stuff back presumably four feet, but let's say I'm camping on critical infrastructure and I must move, then I would just be told, hey, you have to move, and then I would just be basically kind of guessing where the best, next best location would be.
What, what, what our ability. What our ability to do is to identify the locations in which it would be against an ordinance for them to be at. So much like the sidewalk, we can see that if we don't have four feet of space, we can identify, this is what four feet of space would be. Do you think we can get us to the point to where we're getting that four feet of space? So we have the ability to identify the areas that would be unable to be utilized.
Okay. And then, this is, I guess, more informal, but based on your experience, you and your team, so if someone's asked to move, do you typically see them move somewhere nearby? Like, are they moving across the street? Are they moving into nearby neighborhoods?
Yeah, I would say more often than not, it's still within the general vicinity. It's a path of least resistance.
Awesome. And then, you know, this is obvious because I think we all see it, but there's nothing that prevents people from, once you leave, moving right back to the same spot.
That's correct. And we do see that, so we'll see repeat 3-1-1 calls. I'll go back to another example of the sidewalk ordinance. We'll see repeat 3-1-1 calls with sidewalk ordinance complaint for one specific camp area that we would have oftentimes responded the day before, and we were able to get that voluntary compliance. And then if we're no longer there, we're not there to see that it remains in compliance.
Thank you. That's it for my questions.
You bet.
And I think that's an important thing to note is, we, you know, we do obviously expend a lot of resources and time going out to encampments, talking with folks, trying to get them into services when we have them available, and then, you know, asking people if they're in places where it's not safe for them to camp or it's impacting our infrastructure to move. But, you know, obviously, we're not sitting around and babysitting and watching, you know, whether or not people are going to move back or not. And it just really makes me wonder about whether that's the best use of resources, which is kind of always my concern around Measure O and why I didn't support it. But it is the law, but I did want to make that a point because, you know, when we talk about enforcement, we talk about sidewalks and all of this infrastructure, what does it mean? Where are people actually going? And so, you know, I know that all of us on this dais are having conversations with our residents and the city and county's efforts on homelessness every single day. I have no doubt that this is, you know, what we're spending, each one of us is spending a lot of time doing, and each of us have gotten pretty good, I would say, at learning about what's being done, but I learn new things every day. I also acknowledge that through this work, I acknowledge to my constituents that we don't have enough, and I'm really glad that that was called out in this workshop today because I think sometimes that's not always, there's not always a fine point put on that. But I try to make it clear whenever possible, we don't have enough shelter beds. We don't have enough permanent supportive housing or low-income housing or affordable housing, and most of our spaces are typically full on any given night. And I say this because hopefully, you know, people, the residents of Sacramento are listening at home as well, I think there is sometimes a perception that we do, that there are spaces and that those are not being utilized, and that's just not the case. And that's the situation that we're in currently. And it's, by the way, not just a city of Sacramento problem, this is something that cities all over California especially are experiencing. And this is important to state because it is a key component behind what we can and can't do under the Martin v. Boise decision. You know, under the various ordinances that the city council has passed over the years, we've established a really robust set of rules of where people can't be. And I sound like a broken record, I say this often, but we say where you can't be. We have, you know, as the map that Councilwoman Valenzuela brought up, you know, sidewalks and schools and daycares and private property and public property and critical infrastructure. And when you really look at what's available, there's very little places where people can be. And so when you, you know, combine the lack of beds, you combine the court decisions and the ordinances, that's kind of led to our de facto policy here in Sacramento, which is, you just have to look out your window and see. We have people who camp along our streets and parking lots around the river, and basically anywhere where people can find a relative sense of safety or comfort, and then people are moved. They're moved, but not often told where they can go, and because this is really nowhere under our current rules, there are really no places for people to go if our beds are full. And so the cycle goes on and on. So I want to be really clear that this is no means the fault of our amazing staff, our DCR team, as I stated earlier, amazing. Your grace, your problem-solving skills, and your compassion is apparent every single day in the work that you do. I know we talk often. And so you just move mountains with limited resources, and I really want to call that out, and that's not just the city, that's also the county. Like, we see the work that you do as well. We also acknowledge that as a region, that building capacity, it takes time. You know, this is the frustration of some of us also on the four-by-two, is the amount of time that it takes to make sure that we have the housing that we need, that we have the shelter that we need. There is a very big gap between the thousands of people on our streets and the resources that we need to get them into some kind of housing, not to mention housing or shelter or other program that is needed. So we know that our needs are greater than our capacity, that's just the truth. And then, you know, as I stated earlier, this is only exacerbated by the sheer number of people that are entering homelessness. So as we recently learned, that's three for every one. So I think it's really important for us to think about prevention as a key component of this. How do we keep people in their homes, in addition to how do we help people off the streets? And so looking into the L-HAP and other resources. And then I just want to bring something up, you know, as uncomfortable as this conversation may be, I think that we need to start to collectively have a conversation of what do we do in the interim while we're building capacity? Because right now, this is, you know, what we're doing now is what we're seeing out on the streets. And so is there another path forward? Is there a way for us to identify places where they can legally exist and camp that's not, you know, on the easements between a sidewalk and a street, or in someone's parking lot, or so on? And I know that's a really uncomfortable conversation. I know that nobody really wants to talk about what it looks like to have, you know, huge camps somewhere, but right now, this is what we're currently experiencing. And so I would love to have that conversation with my colleagues to see if there's a way that we can identify locations and provide basic infrastructure so that people can safely camp somewhere. And then this also has a dual benefit of having people be one-place consistency. If you talk to any caseworkers that you work with every day, and one of the biggest challenges that they have is they'll connect with someone, they'll go back, you know, that person doesn't have a cellphone, or they do have a cellphone but they don't have a charger, they don't know where they're going to be in the next few days. And then, you know, when that person is able to get into a program of some sort, whether it's substance use or mental health or housing, they can't be found. And so I think having consistent places for people to be so that they can be found is going to exponentially help our ability to get people connected to services as well. And so, you know, I know it's not a perfect solution, but what we're doing now is untenable as well. And so I am very interested in finding a pathway that we can get people to a place, as imperfect as it is under the current systems that we have. So I know that we're not going to necessarily have that conversation here, but I would love to have that in the future. And then my last comments...
Councilmember Maple can have a question for you, or for the county, on what you're saying right now. For the county, what types of housing will you allow us to do, the city, in order for you to continue providing services to the people? So like, say that Councilwoman Maple identifies like 10 safe parking sites where people can put up tents. Does the county, with our partnership agreement, will the county come out and provide services to those encampments that we put up?
Absolutely. So we provide behavioral health and social services to all residents regardless of where they live, in encampments or whatnot. So if I'm understanding your question, would we still serve people even if they were at safe campgrounds? We would. We serve people at Miller Park, for instance.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. No problem. It's a good question because I know there's a lot of complexity to this. And then just my last comments, I also wanted to uplift what a caller said earlier, and that is that we need a regional solution. Without a doubt, that's true. If we try to address these issues alone or in the limited capacity that we're currently doing, we will not meet the needs of our communities, period. I mean, I hear the frustration from our business community, I hear residents, I hear the suffering of people who are experiencing homelessness on our streets, and we cannot do it alone. We know that. Our city manager has told us what our budget situation looks like, and that is true all over the region. And so my colleagues, this is why I support the creation of a formal joint powers authority that brings together not just the county and the city of Sacramento, but other cities in our region as well. We need to formulate and use the basis of the Strategic Action Plan that's already in place, the L-HAP, that has that accountability, but we also need to pool our resources, right? We need to be able to use an economy of scale to address the problem that we have. You know, if we are talking about 200 beds here and 200 beds here and 500 here, we're never going to meet the scale of the actual problem, and that's going to require us working together. So I just want to acknowledge that I know one of our assembly members, Kevin McCarty, has introduced some initial legislation that will move forward next year that just is a baseline for this conversation. My understanding that he's open to amendments and input on that legislation, but I would really encourage not just us on this dais to engage in that conversation, but our partners across the region, too, because I think that we have to be working in a much bigger, more strategic fashion. And so I will end my comments there, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Getta, then Councilmember LaLloa, and Councilmember Kaplan.
Yeah, first, I want to just thank our city team and our county partners for coming here today, and I appreciate our conversations we have during the four-by-two. And for us that are weekly or regularly meeting on this with the four-by-two, we get the opportunity to see the progress, we get the opportunity to also see the challenges and, you know, what we have to confront ahead. So I agree with the mayor's recommendation about having a, you know, it doesn't have to be long, but at least consistent, city manager's report so that the public also knows what we had accomplished the prior week or prior weeks, and so that there is a better public record of that effort. But I want to focus my comments here to, you know, to some of the things that I've received over the last couple of days. And a question for the city manager, I mean, Measure O did get passed by the voters, there was a number of requirements on the city, we've gone through the numbers on the financial side as well, but there was the question about the portal and then this issue of hiring a hearing officer. Why is it that we haven't executed that situation?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, if you read through the measure language itself, it literally caps our investment into homelessness under Measure O, not to mention the $42 million-plus dollars a year in our budget that you just adopted.
Sure, no, I know.
$200 million over five years. But we've reached that, and so we are in full compliance with Measure O. And I'll let the city attorney weigh in as well because we were working with their office. And so, I mean, but if we, if we were to hire a compliance officer, you follow that through kind of the logical conclusion...
Sure.
Is that under Measure O, it would require some action that we would have to take under Measure O. And we're just not in a place where we can do that right now because of the 1,100 beds that we're managing right now. We're at capacity in terms of our ability to provide those services. And so I've been having conversations with many people in the community, and it is really striking to me that people have not read the measure, including the proponents of the measure. It's actually a little bit embarrassing.
Well, this is, and again, this is in highlighting again why, how many beds we have, where we are at capacity, you know, where also the other partners are, I think is critical because that'll become commonplace knowledge. But, I mean, I guess this question then comes to the city attorney's office, at least my understanding of Measure O, if it requires us to have a portal and requires us even to submit, you know, submissions from complaints from residents, and we don't have a hearing officer, it almost seems to me, at least, and I'm not the attorney, this is why I'm asking the city attorney, you can answer here today or give me a response back, but it almost, to me, it obligates us to execute that process, even if we've met the financial cap. At least that's my understanding, because we have an obligation to what the law says that the measure was approved by. So, city attorney, can you answer that, or have your team answer that?
Vice Mayor, I would absolutely prepare a written response from our office. There's a number of issues involved in the question you just presented. And first and foremost, I want to say that this is a case of first impression, this is a brand-new measure, in implementation stages. I know my office doesn't have the ability to have a bunch of case law to review to determine how these terms are going to be interpreted by a court. So we provided a number of opinions on how we believe the measure will be implemented or should be implemented. And we also have a number of people that have filed claims now pursuant to the measure. So in some respects, these are pending litigation items now that will, really, it's incumbent upon me to make sure that I have a very thorough response to your question. I think that it's possible that there is a lot of nuances to answer your question.
Thank you. That's a great, greatest response was from the city attorney. But thank you for, what I would prefer is a very, as clear as a response, given the nuances and given the new nature of this, but...
I also meant to add, we're not hiring a hearing officer. We actually have hearing officers...
Correct.
That already hear city code hearings and appeals. And so I know people keep saying we haven't hired a hearing officer. I don't think we need to, they already exist.
Sure. No, we use them for everything, from dangerous buildings to, you know, even illegal cannabis, you know, grow houses. So, or even the use of that, or the assignment of a hearing officer. I guess, to me, when I think about, and again, I'm responding to these concerns that I've gotten from my own constituents, is that if the measure requires us to have a portal, then we, and to have a process for that, then we need to execute that process. So I guess I want clarity on that. And the other fact is, and this is just for anybody who watched the last budget hearing, the other fact is, we have appropriated and have executed an enormous amount of resources for abatement. In fact, we had that conversation on a consent item about whether or not we should be executing the increased amount on trash abatement and enforcement. And also, one of the other conversations, we asked for in the budget conversation, was what happens about those rolling contracts? You know, with entities like you saw on the screen, St. John's Center for Real Change, for City of Refuge, all of those pieces moving combined. So a couple points here, I will just say, one, I think if we have the authority and we have a hearing officer already available in place, then we should do that. I mean, the ordinance requires that. But if it's a litigation item, then I want to make sure the council gets an information on that. The second piece I want to bring up here is that, again, if we go back to the city-county partnership agreement, you know, I think one of the important things that was brought up is that because also of this joint county effort and the partnership and communications, we moved to this increased number of core centers, too, that we're working with, and not just in downtown, but looking at a geography through the region. Although, I question the map of the geography of the core centers, but, you know, that's here nor there, there's a method to that. And I appreciate that the fact that they're throughout the region so that there's ample access to that. Because the concern that I do have is that there's so much sometimes focus on downtown, and there has been some in the north area, but, you know, I'm hearing from my constituents, you know, why haven't we abated the area in front of a library? We have, you know, Colonial Heights Library, it's en route for students there, it's not a school, but it is an area where, you know, we want to look at. You know, the other issues that I get from residents in the south area is, why don't we have another facility? But the good thing is, we are working on the south facility, we are working on the south area, and that's a part of the city-county partnership. So I want folks to, you know, who are listening and watching, this is that there is progress on that, and I think this weekly report out will be helpful. I also, I'm going to comment here because I know that there's going to be later discussion on it, but I just, you know, Councilmember Jennings passed me his copy of his proposal here, which I support. You know, I have no objection to what they're proposing here, but it seems to me, and if I read the staff report right, and if I, at least my recollection, that priority level one of critical infrastructure is already priority level one, isn't that correct, Mario? So, I mean, and then, you know, and I agree with the vehicle removal ordinance, but doesn't that also currently fall under the priority level one? And if it doesn't, then I support it, but maybe talk a little bit about, you know, these recommendations?
Correct. There are several factors that determine whether an encampment is determined to be a level-one high priority. Any violation of a city ordinance helps it to be categorized as a level-one, whether it's a sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure, or a vehicle code violation, that would help it to be assessed as a level-one. There are other factors as well, like public health and safety concerns, you know, people plugging into electrical outlets and propane tanks being all over the place. So there are multiple factors, but yes, any violation of a sidewalk, of a city ordinance does factor into that.
Thank you. And so then I guess the next question then is really, we only, the partnership agreement requires us to get to 10 teams, but we're only at four. And so, you know, maybe at the next city council manager update, if you can coordinate with the county to find out what's the progress in that. I know it's hard, it's difficult... to hire. I know it's, part of it is hiring the clinicians that are necessary to get the full-service partnership agreements, or full-service partnership funding. But is Mario or Siobhan, is there, do you have any information about where we are on track to try to grow the teams? And I know we had some conversations on that. We started with two, we're at four, we're moving into that direction.
Yeah, I think a better way to sort of think about the team composition, and certainly Ben might have more information, but is we're shooting to get 50 people total on those teams.
Fifty people total, yes.
We have nine of the 10 behavioral health positions filled. So the behavioral health positions aren't really what's holding us back right now. Fifteen of the outreach workers are going to be coming once the managed care plans finish signing, the contracts, and SAC covered can ramp up. The rest are DCR staff. So those teams can be composed differently depending on the configuration, the sizes of the encampment. Do you want to add to that?
DCR teams are fully staffed up, but I'll ask Ben if you can come up then to talk about the configuration of the teams. I know we have four teams that are out in the field, and there may be other behavioral health folks that are working in other areas as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. Good afternoon. Ben Worrall, Social Services Manager for DCR. Our teams are primarily made up of DCR staff, behavioral health staff, including clinicians, as well as their peer specialists. We are also hoping soon to have access to the 15 contracted CalAim workers, which will be through a county contract with, I'm not sure exactly who the provider would be at this moment, but we will then have access to 15 more staff to add to these teams, which we can also augment with our HOPE cooperative teams.
Great. Thank you very much. And, you know, and that's important, because what we hear from constituents is, how can we abate the encampments faster? How can we connect folks and interact with them faster? And that's only going to happen as we staff up, and as we make sure we staff up, and that, I'm glad to hear that, you know, on the clinician's side, we're at nine of the 10 that we need to get to, and that we're able to use that to be able to sign up as many people. And there's, you know, in fact, before, this is probably more informational, but Siobhan, maybe can you talk a little bit about the, I think the positive thing about when we have had workers out there, the response rate of signing up to FSP? Because I think that that information, I think, was key, which we hear sometimes that some folks don't want to take the services, or sign up to them, even though the standard is high for FSP. Can you talk a little bit about where we are on that?
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll invite Monica back to do that, the numbers.
Hello. So from January 1st till the end of April, with our co-deployments, we assigned more than 240 people to outpatient treatment services. Fifty of those were full-service partnerships, so a good quarter of them. That's a little bit higher than kind of what you see normally. And housing and shelter is available and guaranteed to full-service partnership clients who accept the options we give them. But yeah, I would say a good 25%. And out of project room key, it was six out of 10. I don't know the percent on that. Can't do the math that quick.
Well, thank you very much. So six out of 10, you know. I'd like it to be 10 out of 10, but six out of 10, we're moving in that direction. Thank you. I appreciate that. So colleagues, you know, one, I know that some of you want to talk about this, but I think for, you know, I'm willing to support this. I know this has got to go through its channels. I think some of it's already there. I think the bigger thing is the staff resources to get folks out on the street. I'd like to see, you know, at least a compliance with Measure O, what this is, where we are with the hearing examiner. And then finally, when it comes down to it, we've got to also look at properties available. I know in my district, we're looking at a number of properties that try to be able to work in tandem with the health service provider, so we have a location that has the wraparound services, that has the resources with that. But until we have, you know, again, until we have more staff on the street, that's the only way we're going to be able to move faster. I would like to make sure that our priority, again, because there's like eight factors in this priority. I want to make sure that they focus on the safety a lot with families. Again, I just don't see it acceptable that we have a situation that is unsafe for kids walking to school, and that's one of the priorities. It says routes to school, that's in our level-one already. But Diaz has been an option, an issue. I want to make sure that our kids that are walking to Willsey Wood have a safe pathway, and that kids that want to get to Colonial Heights Library have a safe option and a safe pathway. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues.
Vice Mayor, I just want to clarify two points here. So, and I don't want to belabor the point, but we are in compliance with Measure O. So, and we will get a report back to you on this whole hearing officer piece. The second is, the prioritization that we're going to bring back following the discussion on the dais here today, we're going to have to kind of pick and choose which things we pull out of tier one, because if we have too many tier-one priorities, we really don't have any priorities.
Oh, I understand that. Look, I mean, that's why I mentioned, I think, in this proposal.
Yeah.
That's already part of it. But it's how do we enforce that? So I think what's important is, how are we getting to that enforcement?
So I think there's going to be two steps to that. The more immediate one that everybody's expecting, and we fully will comply with, is that we're going to burn overtime. And to the extent we need to come back and ask for additional resources and FTEs, that's a broader discussion about finances. But in the short term, it's going to be overtime from all of our departments.
Sure. And I know we're going to be gearing through this in, as the year goes on. What I'd like is to find a time through budget and audit as we get closer to the mid-year to figure out where we are on that.
Okay.
And so that way, when we get to mid-year, it's not like a big surprise. Like, we know exactly what our overtime is, where our resources are. If there had been hiring challenges, why are those hiring challenges occurring? So I don't want to wait six months to find out what that scenario is.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Getta, Councilmember Laloe, and Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just as Vice Mayor alluded to, I also agree with the recommendation of the staff on this proposal. With that said, Mario, can I ask you a question? You indicated that we have about 27 location, I think maybe Nick did, my apologies, that are priority. If these 27 locations become one location, would that be more efficient, less efficient? How would that work? I'm not sure I understand the question. If we combine all those encampments into one?
The 27 encampments are dispersed.
Right. If we bring those 27 into one...
You mean if we identified a location where we could relocate the folks who are in those encampments to one?
What would that result in? What would the outcome be, if we bring it into one location?
So that would be shelter in place. I imagine you're saying a safe camping location where we could fit everybody there. So the challenge would be identifying a site.
Forget that. I'm just saying, would it be efficient? Like, tell me if that would make life easier for your team, the county, and...
Of course. If all the folks who are experiencing homelessness were concentrated in one location, then yes, they would be at one location and they wouldn't be anywhere else. So that would...
Great. Thank you very much. And I know our county friends are here. In my district, there's a camp resolution. I'm just curious, as far as behavioral health, what has the outcome been regarding that particular space? How many hits have we had, and how many people have signed up?
I think Monica walked out. Emily Halken. So we just got a request about three days ago from the leaders of Camp Resolution to deploy our behavioral health workers, because they typically deploy with DCR. And so we're going to be responding either collaboratively with DCR, or if it makes more sense, we'll send our teams out directly. So we have not been out to Camp Resolution. We just got the request. I think it was Monday of this week.
So Camp Resolution has been there for quite a bit now. So are you saying that if the residents didn't reach out to county, that they would just be on, they'd be on their own for whatever time?
No, no, apologies.
That made the request to your department.
Right.
So I know as soon as that camp went up, my office reached out and said, please send as many social services as possible. So I'm a little bit concerned, why is it taking so long?
Sure. So let me clarify. So for encampments, which Camp Resolution is an encampment, our behavioral health workers deploy collaboratively with DCR. And so we go where DCR sets priorities. It may, and maybe Ben will know, maybe they have visited collaborative. We also got a direct outreach from the leader of Camp Resolution.
Madam City Attorney?
I can't speak to that.
I just want to clarify, Camp Resolution is not an encampment. It's a city sanctioned safe around site.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies for that. So we would be deploying in the city areas to non-shelters. We go to all the shelters throughout our system, whether they're city-funded, counted-funded, or privately funded, on a rotating basis. For outdoor locations, we would, in the city of Sacramento, deploy based on DCR priorities.
And I have another location in my district that's being serviced under HOPE Cooperative. Can you tell me how many times county has been to that facility for FSP or behavioral...
I'm not sure which facility you're talking about. Are you talking about the Outreach and Engagement Center?
No, this is on Del Paso Regional Park on Auburn.
So for encampments, or for the Auburn Science Center?
Auburn Science, yes.
Yeah. So the behavioral health clinicians are there twice a week. I don't have the data on particular outcomes, but they are there, as we are with other shelters on a regular basis. They go twice a week.
And would you know how many individuals or families have been signed up for FSP?
I wouldn't, but we can work with behavioral health team to get that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Go from.
You know, colleagues, the biggest thing I'm hearing is housing, which I agree. However, we don't control that. You know, we're not in the building houses unless our state and federal agencies recognize how important affordable housing is and expedite the process. We're going to be talking about housing for the next 10, 15 years, unfortunately. But I do want to bring up something that we voted on about, I want to say maybe, two years ago, and we decided to take some, and we decided to use our general funds to acquire 102 acres for the purpose of safe parking or potentially safe parking tents or what have you. And it's been two and a half years, and that property, that was, I believe, Mr. City Manager, if I'm not mistaken, it was about $16 million?
I think it was 12.3, if I recall.
My apologies.
Somebody fact-checked me out there.
So 12.3. So my question is, at one point, the message was that we're investing in that property for a particular reason. And I know things have changed, and I, again, with the change, I'm 100% in agreement. I think having a sports center in Mayor Protam's district is essential for that community. However, the timeline of a sports center could be anywhere between five, seven, even 10 years from now, depending on how the economy goes. Why aren't we using that facility as a center, maybe for safe parking, that we can bring in, and the county can be more mobilized with our DCR to provide all the wraparound services needed, including FSP and including potential housing opportunities?
So let me start to answer that, and I'll turn over to Mayor Protam about the more recent action that's happened on that site. So as you recall, when we purchased this at auction, we were working with the Congresswoman Matsui's office to gain access to the site, because there's no infrastructure in play. There's no power water sewer, no access. So we took an approach to get a federal easement so that we can access the site. Simultaneously, we worked with the adjacent property owners to try and gain access from another perspective as well, on the other side of the lot. All the while, our, the community development department was taking a look at where we could potentially pave in certain areas that did not violate any sequel issues, because there's some contamination issues that we need to remediate. We're in the process of doing that, and in parallel, Mayor Protam had did a visioning out in her district to see what they want us to do long-term. And there were several meetings, and there were some outcomes. But as it stands right now, it will require, I can't remember the number, I don't know if Ryan Moore's in here, but it was, you know, upwards of $4 or $5 million to get the parcel in a place where we could have access and, you know, base level of, you know, improvements in terms of, I think it was, I don't know if it was asphalt or decomposed granite. And so we're pausing and waiting for this process to play out. So I'll leave, and I'll turn it over to you, Mayor Protam.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that. So the long-term proposal, I think we're all in agreement. There's no disagreement on that. But in the meantime, I think when we have elderly who are unhoused or families with children, is there any way that we can bring them all together, maybe using this particular property, so they can get immediate services and be taken off the streets? Just a suggestion. I mean, again, I'm bringing it up because, again, we went to our taxpayers, and we said, we're going to take $12.3 million of your money, and we're going to invest it on something like this particular lot for these purposes. And we all voted on it with that concept in mind. And then, obviously, you know, Mayor Protam, under her leadership, and I fully understand that her community, their needs. But again, it's long-term, I 100% support that. But the big question is, right now, where we are today, it's pretty scary. I mean, we're getting to a point that I don't know how we can get ahead of it and minimize it. You know, I read the same report. It says $300, some of these individuals will not be unhoused. They'd actually be living at home. So my question is, if we're spending $42 million on our unhoused projects and community, maybe we could have taken out some of those 300s and literally tried to help individuals so they don't become homeless. We have to think outside the box. The whole idea that we're going to wait for housing to take place, it's just not realistic right now, because it takes anywhere between 14 to 48 months for affordable housing developers to get their financing right. So 14 months, they get their financing right, then they got to go submit plans. That takes another six, eight months. At the best-case scenario, if they identify a location, you're looking at about two years. But we all know that's not the case. It takes at least three, four, five years minimum. So I hear, you know, my colleagues, that the housing is an issue, but again, we don't build houses. Developers do. And the developers are at the mercy of their tax credits between state and feds. So we don't have anything that we can do with that. I kind of, you know, I see what you talk about, Mr. Mayor, and your frustration, that we have to make some quick moves. So whether it's creating some pallet homes and sticking them to a generator or what have you to get people indoor. I mean, the whole idea about Camp Resolution in my district was, here we have 50-some individuals that are outside. You know, what if we bring them inside? How would that play a role? And I can tell you, it still needs a lot of work, but that, at least, there are 50 individuals that rather than being outside, they're within a confined area. And that's why I brought up the 102 acres, because if we don't use it right now, with the help of the county and the FSP, that it's guaranteed housing, are we kind of waiting, and the more we wait, the more of a deeper hole we get ourselves in, that at one point we cannot get out? And that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Camp Resolution, by the way, I was out there last week, is a great project, and congratulations. It does need power and water.
Yes.
And I hope that's something we can work on in shade, right, to make it even more livable. Councilmember, well, Mayor Protam, bang on the question of the 102 acres. Did you...
Yeah, Mayor, I could provide updates. And I know that the 102 acres is actually coming to council as soon as we're done with the opportunity constraint analysis. As you heard from our city manager, the land is actually landlocked, and there are some environmental issues with the piece of property. And so our planning team, we have a consultant working on the opportunity constraint analysis to bring forth what we can and can't do on the property. But I definitely want to just back up, because I, you know, Councilmember Laloe has mentioned 102 acres multiple times, and I want to remind folks that this council did vote to purchase this site. One, to use it as a site for short-term, to provide permanent supportive housing and finding short-term solutions. But another reason why we secured this site was also to ensure that we could bring in economic engine. And I've always been very consistent of that. Someone can do a PRA request, and they'll find that that was my intent when we found the 102 acres, especially in an area where it's been under-invested. And so absolutely, and I also want to make sure it's aligned to the listening session that we held. We held multiple listening session with community members, but also, I ensure that we also held a specific listening session with residents experiencing homelessness. And you have my commitment that I'm absolutely dedicated to ensuring that on that 102 acres, we also provide services and ensure that we have permanent supportive housing. I think that's really important. But on the point that you raised, Councilmember Laloe, about bringing... raised, Councilmember Lululeu, about bringing everyone together and putting them in one location, I just want to remind folks, especially just how complex this issue is, is that I want to remind folks that about a year and a half ago, the mayor asked this council, a few of y'all were not on the council, to put forth vacant properties to do safe ground and safe parking. Thank you, Mayor, for showing that. And the mayor put that challenge forward. And every council district was supposed to bring forth, not permanent supportive housing. We're talking about safe ground and safe parking. And I, in District 8, have always been committed to that. Franklin Light Rail Station, right, it was ready to go. We did a good neighbor policy. I had neighbors yelling at us, why are we going to do a safe parking in District 8? And I said, everyone has a collective responsibility. That was ready to go. But the answer was, we weren't ready because we didn't have the money to do it. And I say that because I actually think when you put 11,000, 10,000 people on a property without aquatic resources, without it being landlocked, without having the right infrastructure, what you end up doing is doing redlining all over again. Right? Like 50 years ago, redlining was used to push black, brown, indigenous immigrant folks into underserved neighborhoods. And that has led to unattended consequences. And for me, it's really important that we don't do that, that we don't replicate the same kind of systems that we're trying to address and disrupt. So I actually think it's really about equity. There are unhoused folks in every single district. And as the mayor proposed a year and a half ago, for every council member to come forth, there are vacant properties until we figure out the 102 acres, which I'm committed, every district can put forth vacant properties, right, to do safe ground, to do safe parking. And that is, I think you heard from Councilmember Maple earlier, that that is uncomfortable conversation to have. But I think she's bringing it back, I'm bringing it back, that that needs to be across every single district. And I think that's important. If we all committed 1,000 beds, safe ground and safe parking in each district, that's 8,000 for short-term. Right? So I don't think that it's on the responsibility of one district that's been underserved to do that. I don't think, I think that's injustice. And we also have to make sure there's infrastructure. Right now, there is no way to actually enter the property because it's landlocked. And so we have to make sure we do that analysis. But absolutely, we have unhoused folks in District 8, and I'm ready, our community is ready to step up. We are a compassionate district. We have the Medview Navigation Center in the district. We have La Mancha. We are always right there to step up. But we need every single district to step up and do their part. Until we talk about the 102 acres, yeah.
Mayor Protam, thank you so much for that. At no time was I even remotely insinuating that we should bring 10,000 people to one district. That's absolutely, I agree with you. As far as the practice of redlining, and I appreciate your passion about that, but also, I would like for you to recognize the current redlining that we have created, which involves North Sacramento.
Absolutely.
And we're practicing that every day. You're practicing, your colleague, all of us are practicing. So we can't pick one area and worry about redlining when we actually forcing the redlining to another area. And that's what's taking place. In fact, on one of the graphs that, one of the charts that Mario posted, you can see the amount of, you know, calls that are coming from one district. Of course, District 4, little bit larger than, higher than District 2. But District 2 is there. And as far as economic engine, I applaud you on, you know, bringing that economic engine to your district. But if you look at District 2, even if we had an economic engine in the past few years, that economic engine is toiling down. Yes, I couldn't agree with you more. I think that it's a responsibility of every council member to allocate some space, at least for safe parking, you know, to get the RVs and some of the vehicles in there. And the reason, and only the only reason that I brought the 102, is going back to it. 10,000, it's out of the, it's not even norm. But even if we can utilize it for, let's say, 100 RVs that are comprised of families with children, you know, or 50, 60 tents that would be exclusively the senior citizen community that's outside in the dark. That's, those are the numbers I was thinking about.
Absolutely. And Councilmember Lululeu, I would say, I absolutely agree with you on that. But the 102 acres, as it stand, and the city manager was sure with you, you can't, we can't just do that right now because it's landlocked, we don't have the pavement. It'll cost additional four or five million dollars to create that easement, right, as I'm looking at the city manager. So right now, we have vacant properties in every single district where we could stand that up now. Right? So I just want us to, as you said, think outside of the box, right, that there are vacant city properties right now in every single district that we can actually stand up safe ground and safe parking. And so I just want to...
So, Mr. City Manager, if I may, and I hope that my colleagues are also okay with this. Would your office and the staff be able to identify these vacant lots in each district? And can you bring it out back to us of what you have identified that's workable, right? And I know that Mayor's comprehensive siding plan, we got to go back to it. You know, they always say, listen to more experienced people, because guess what? He brought it up three years ago, and now we're doing a full circle.
I think...
But, you know, I think, I think during, when it was produced, as council members, we went out there and we identified locations. And then your team has to go through and say, well, this is not going to work out. This is not going to work. That's why, rather than us handpicking it, I would like to ask your office to look at every district and see which parcels in every district could make this, have this...
I just, can I just add that, I just want to add, I'm going to speak, because Mayor did task us that, and council members on here was not able to present a tangible solution to have safe parking and safe ground. And so we're revisiting that. I'm thrilled that my colleagues on the council is excited to revisit that. But I remember very vividly that some council members did not want safe parking or safe ground in their district. And so that's the reason why we had so much back and forth, and that's the reason why Mayor's plan fell, because there wasn't that political will. Now, if there's a new political will that every district is going to step up, I think that's great. But I just want to remind folk, that was the political challenge at that time. And I think it's important to say that on record.
And I think I want to take it one step further, Mayor Protam, and that is, one of the sites...
Last comment on this, please.
Of the sites that were brought up, at least by this council member, today, one of those sites is being referred to as camp resolution.
Okay.
So...
Let's, I think the point, you made a good point, and so has Mayor Protam, and I was actually going to make it in my closing. You want more capacity, and this is city and county, you want more safe ground, where we're got 60 at Miller Park, and that's all we can do, then you're darn right, we need to come up with more sites. We do. We've been through that. I've been through this, man, and I, we all have, and have the, you know, the bandages to, and the scars to show for it. So let's not go back and forth, but the point is correct. If we're going to get more beds quicker than what's in the pipeline now, and there is significant pipeline, right, the county's pipeline, the city's, the 350 from the state is taking time, and that's the frustration. We're going to do something quicker than its motel leases, or its safe ground. That's what it is. Motel leases or safe ground, which will, by the way, enable us to enforce or assure compliance in a much more clear way, in a much more clear way. So that challenge is correct. I was going to end with it, but you all beat me to it. Let's go on to the next point. Is that okay?
I'd like to put that on...
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, we looked at 100 different parcels at one point, and we can carve it up any which way to figure out which of those are most viable. And we can sort by districts.
I think if you were to pick one site per district, that'd be a good start.
Okay. Mayor, I have a question to follow up with what you just said. So for the county, county, what can you do now to help us identify more beds? Like, we're here, and we're all willing, and we want to just have more beds, have more services. What, how can you help us now? I mean, I'm not in the two-by-twos by fours, so.
Right, right. And I was going to point to the four-by-two that's been having some robust conversations. And the mayor, I think, said it, is we have several projects in the pipeline that are scheduled to come online and open up late summer, early fall, again next year, that are coming our way, and it's just taking some time to do. The board's committed resources to that. We have resources obligated in the pipeline. So I think any further discussion about additional capacity, building additional beyond what's in the pipeline, would have to go back to our Board of Supervisors.
Okay. All right. I'm going to now turn it, thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Then I'm going to, I'm going to close this off with a final thought. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you will summarize. And what I want to say is, I appreciate all of my colleagues, because you asked a lot of the questions that I had. And I just want to point out a couple of things that haven't been brought out, that I hope we take into consideration. I think today's, like, two-word comment that we're hearing from people is, the public is looking for meaningful action. Our neighbors are unhoused. Everybody is looking for meaningful action from this council. So I hope that's what you see with the request for a quick adoption of the protocols that were brought forth by Councilmember Jennings, Talamontes, and I. And then to understand for the public, because the public doesn't always get this, why did the three of us work together? Well, the three of us are not on the four-by-two with the county, and we can't work with any of our colleagues who are on the four-by-two. Otherwise, we violate the Brown Act. So the three of us work together because these are conversations that we can have amongst us of how can we look at, how do we do something? Because the public is asking us to move faster. And because I'm not on the four-by-two, I will say this publicly, I'm a little disappointed I didn't get a county presentation. You know, I had my staff watch the county presentation. It's important for me not being on Measure O, four-by-two, or whatever you want to call it. I don't get the same information my colleagues do. And so however that happened, I want to see it rectified. But personally, right now, I will just say that I am disappointed. I don't blame anybody. I'm just saying Lisa Kaplan is disappointed because I think it's important that when we have these conversations, because, Mayor, I want to say thank you, these workshops are what we need. We, as colleagues, they may take a while. They may take longer than we want. But I think these full discussions, thank you. Thank you for your leadership in that. I crave that. Maybe it's me being a school board member and getting into the policy what, nitty-gritty. But I do want to say thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership. And as you heard, you know, there's at least five of us that have requested the city manager to come forward with the protocols to city council so that we can adopt them. And then just, we'll want clarification. I don't need answers now. But one of the reasons that we requested in Priority 1, the critical infrastructure ordinance, there's language in there, but it doesn't reference the ordinance. It says critical infrastructure, so I don't know if that needs to be clarified or not. And then vehicle removal ordinance just wasn't identified. What you'll see in Priority 1, what we looked at, is what do we already, as a city, have on our books? And we're just saying we need to look at compliance. This isn't about enforcement. This isn't about removal. But how do we create some meaningful action of compliance that I think our community is looking for? And how can we move forward with that? I also want to thank our staff. DCR, who is out there every day. Peter Lemos, Code Enforcement, which Peter was recognized this morning by the Power and Alliance P. Bid for the work that Code Enforcement has done. Thank you for your leadership in that. Also, we have volunteers out there that don't often get recognized, but the California, I think it's the Waterway Alliance that goes along our canals all over the city. These are volunteers helping clean up. When we talk about trash abatement and the concerns, we have individuals out there every day that are trying to make our communities healthier and safer. This past Friday, a lot of my questions were answered because I did do a personal ride-along with DCR. So thank you, Ben. Thank you, Hezekiah, for all the work that you guys are doing. Because my staff went on a separate ride-along. And so here's the things I learned on the ride-along. Because I'm new, so I don't have the context some others do. We're 14 months behind on Sacramento Step Forward implementing a coordinated access. And I'll just say this, I don't know, I hate technology. My staff will know. I put my head, I'm an ostrich. Technology blows up, I walk away. Like, I don't, I don't understand technology. But what I will know is that every day, millions of kids go to our schools. Our teachers take attendance, and that attendance is logged every single day. And they know which kid is in class and which kid is not. And when the kid's not in class, that home is getting a call. So there are apps out there that work in education, that we can have and make sure that all of our providers know that they can get in. Whether that could be transferred to this or not, all's I know is there are things that have already been built that I think we should be looking at, and we can move forward. I want to quickly, because Councilmember Talamontes asked me that, is to just bring up briefly, when we talk about, we know that we want to bring back our homeless response protocols for adoption. But also what's important that comes back, as we talk about, that you'll see what we put forward, is the Health and Safety Camp Management Protocol. Because in reality, while we don't have enough beds and spaces, I think the public will start seeing some things, and there will be a little bit of relief. If we start finding ways to clean up around where there is stabilization and there are camps on our sidewalks, if they can, if there's a tent on our sidewalk, but it is clean, and it is not full of human waste or junk around it, there will be, I think, some compassion on both sides. So Councilmember Talamontes, if there was anything you wanted to bring up in regards to that?
Yeah, I think it's just, let's clean up our areas and reduce our carbon footprint, you know? Like, how do we have more trash pickups throughout the city so that we can have it clean? And, I mean, with trash pickups is showers, is bathrooms, and what can we do to help people? But also, just make it cleaner and safer for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. And one of the things that if you'll see, I think it's like on the second or third page of our proposal, there is a quick, like, little blurb that also asks, as the city manager brought up, when we are looking at these things, how do we do it within our budget? What is it going to take above our budget? And what do we, as a council, have to decide on priority? Because this is a matter of where do we prioritize things because we only have so much money. For specifics, we haven't mentioned this yet, but approximately, we are spending $36 million on temporary shelters, or 1,100 beds, across the city. So every year, we're spending $32,727.27 approximately per bed. Per bed. There has got to be a more cost-effective way. Like, I don't know what that is. That's why I asked for a fast track of our city auditor. But, but, but literally, we are spending $32,000 per bed. And if Miller Park is for 60 tenths, and it's approximately, how much is that? 3 million?
3.2.
3.2. Okay, so it went up. So my numbers will be a little off because I only approximated it 3 million. I heard that $750,000 of that cost is city insurance. Is that correct?
I don't have that number. Maybe, Mario, is that correct? Or is Nick here? There he is.
500,000?
Yeah.
Approximately 500,000. Okay, so we're spending that on insurance. That's why one of the proposals is how do we look at, because camp resolution came up with somebody is leasing that space, so we're not paying insurance on that, which then frees up money for us to help others. Because I feel like we're playing whack-a-mole right now and not moving forward on something. Because if you look at it this way, we're spending 3.2 a Miller Park for 60 tenths. That's over $50,000 a year per tent. Or if you remove the insurance, approximately $38,000 or $39,000 per tent. And let just provide perspective. In the report that just came out of, from UCSF, they're saying that it's families, that the biggest factor to help them from going into homelessness was what United Way is doing, approximately 300 bucks a month, and what we, as a city, have partnered in in what we're doing. So if we look at, is Miller Park the best use of our funding on how we do things? And maybe are there people we can help? If we take the 3 million and give 300 dollars a month, that will go to 833 individuals. Is that a better use of our funds? These are the conversations I think we need to take a step back from. Instead of whack-a-moling, how can we help the greatest amount because the proactive is going to be better than the reactive? We also know action isn't going to happen overnight. But like, all of my colleagues have said, and I really appreciate it, we can't afford to do nothing. Because what we're doing isn't working. Well, we think it's working, and we're taking the steps, and we are, we're seeing, just like the county statistics said, for every person exiting homelessness, three people are coming in. So we've got to do things differently. We all know, and you are very much aware of this, Mayor, government works slow. You and I both don't like that government works slow. I would love, because I see many of our staff doing this, that we and everybody who's doing this and us on council, adopt the haste model. Thoughtful, but we got to work fast. adopt the haste model. Thoughtful, but we got to work faster than we're currently working. And I know funding is an issue, but we have to figure out what we can do in front of us and better use it. We need compassion is moving with haste because it's compassion for our unhoused who can't remain on our streets. We need compassion for safe and clean neighborhoods because people should feel safe to go out and walk their dog. I, as a woman and an individual, occasionally am downtown, and I park my car here, and I may have to be over at the Sheraton or the Hyatt. I remove my rings, I turn on my cellphone light, and I go as fast as possible. That is unacceptable if I, as a single female, have to do that. What about anybody else? What about our kids and others on the streets? What about our neighborhoods? We have to balance that and do better. And we know everything we're talking about takes money. So city manager, just want to reiterate, please bring back thoughts so that we can, we can take action on what that looks like. But I want to be clear. Right now, we currently have state codes that speak to defacing and destructing property. It's on the penal code. Littering and unlawful dumping is health code, penal code, SacCity code. Obstruction of access is penal code, and none of those violate Boise. I think we as a city need to look at how do we balance compassion, but with compliance to help clean up our city? Because it's no fair for somebody to live in a tent full of junk as much as it's no fair for a neighbor to have that outside their front door or in our communities. So, but I want to be very clear. I am not about criminalizing homelessness. But we need clean, safe sidewalks, parks, and communities for all because that also includes our homelessness. So I want to support the further discussion of a JPA. Because I went to an area that, one, you had to coordinate the city, already 1,000 SAFCA and a school district. We can't keep hodgepodgeing it, and Councilmember Maple is correct. This is about pooling our resources to do better. And I don't want to keep going like this, oh, the county didn't work with us, or already 1,000 has this rule, or SAFCA has this rule. Like, we can't do that. We can't afford, again, haste is the answer. One of the things I also learned on the ride-along is DCR is working very well with our impact team in the police department. I think we can work with Chief Lester now and say, how do we increase the impact team that works hand-in-hand with DCR? Especially in some areas where we know that there is criminalization of drug dealing, prostitution, domestic violence, where women are not safe. We need to do that now within the existing resources, and that doesn't take council action. But that's something we can do now. I want to figure out with code enforcement, will we come back? We know that Peter Lemos's team is chasing RVs. They go from Pell to Commerce Circle to Evergreen. Is there such a way that we find out how can we help move that? Because how much money are they spending doing that? And where are ways that we can, we can find answers? I look forward for haste on ease of access because I think we need to coordinate the information we have from all of our partners, city and county, and how can we sign people up more for the FSPs? Because even if you fill all your slots of 1,450, let me be very clear. At a high, just of an estimate of approximately 10,000 people on our streets, that's serving approximately 14 and 1/2% of the population on our streets, which we know over 80% have a mental health issue. So again, we have got to figure out how we can do better. And then I'll leave it. And finally, I think one of the things we need to look at and get from our partners is we need to make it a zero tolerance policy and do better for our families. Because school districts have to pay attention and provide more funding for our unhoused students and our homeless students. Our school districts know where every single one of those students are. Why are we not working better with our school districts? Because how do you save a life? It's rehouse and find housing for that family that's going to make a life, make a change in that life of that child. That child is being traumatized, and if we don't address that, we are furthering what who's going to end up on our streets because those kids have been traumatized. So we all know I'm on kids and families, but that's all I have to say is I think we can do better. I know we can do better. I know we have it, and all of us to do better. But thank you, Mayor, for bringing this. And thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for being on top of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. I'll try to conclude and maybe sum it up a little bit. And I've already spoken to and about the county and appreciate you being here. And let's come back for the full presentation because I think it would be educative for all of our colleagues to know all the different funding sources and the approach the county is taking. But I appreciate you being here all afternoon with us. I want to thank Rick Jennings and Councilmembers, I guess, Talamontes and Kaplan for bringing forward a really important proposal. And I've looked at, I do think we need to get it out to the public, by the way, because I think we're talking about something that maybe everyone hasn't seen, but we'll post it. My city clerk will post it. But I think it's really good, and essentially it says, let's ensure compliance with our existing laws in a more, in an even more strategic way. And I want to get to that in a moment. I also want to thank everybody here for the DCR folks, the people who work in this thankless field, day in and day out, all the people from the county, and our impact teams, our police impact teams, you know? I know they're back there. Again, we've talked about it before, we don't train police officers to be homeless service workers. And yet, we put law enforcement, I think sometimes in, many times, in an unfair and untenable position to try to be social workers as well as law enforcers, and they do a really good job. The impact teams, they've been a part of the success we've had. It's not all failure here, everybody. And remember, we're not alone here. We have stepped into this space as a city like never before. But what you're hearing today is the continued and rightful frustration of a community who wants to see much better. And a division, frankly, that we're all trying to bridge between those who say that, between those who say that unsheltered people are in desperate need, failed by society, which I think is true. And others who were saying that the homeless problem itself, not the individuals, but the existence of it itself, is the cause of significant amount of crime and blight. And that is true as well. And if we're going to make better, more progress, we have to do what we did today. I think actually in workshop form, as we don't listen to each other, not make this so polarized, and really understand that there are truths on both sides here. Because I've tried to say it in my own frame, maybe too much from a policymaker's point of view as a former legislator. I think there ought to be legal obligations on both sides. There ought to be a legal obligation for government to house and serve people, and there ought to be a legal obligation for people to accept it. Put it another way, what the community wants is to care for people, but also they want a cleaner and safer city. And in order to achieve that, it's about rights and responsibilities. It's about government obligations, but it's also about the individual saying yes when the help is offered. We've actually laid very strong foundations for both greater compliance and also the ability to serve more people. And so what's at the core of it? When you look at the enforcement piece, what Councilmember Jennings and others have brought forward, what they're really saying to me is that we have these laws on the books, but we don't have enough resources to be able to prioritize the 27 priority sites, much less the so-called onesies and twosies in a lot of the neighborhoods where neighbors rightfully complain about. We don't have enough resources. And at the same time, while we're awaiting the 350 manufactured homes, and the county is following through on its beds, and we're trying to perfect this coordinated access, we don't have enough beds currently to be able to, to be able to offer people an alternative. Hopefully, we're going to get to scale with these 10 teams and 50 people and be able to provide more of these FSPs to more people. But until we have more beds, either in coordinated access or as a city, we are not going to be able to combine compliance, compliance, and helping people. So what do we do here? There's one thing we haven't talked about. Lisa, you said something that was interesting, I think if I heard it correctly, Councilmember Kaplan. We only have so much money. You know what? How about for the sake of this discussion, we reject that premise for a moment? Maybe we're not spending enough money here. Maybe we need to spend more money on compliance so we can deal with those, the most egregious sidewalk violations, the most egregious cases where people are lighting fires at retail stores? Maybe it's no longer an excuse to say, I'm sorry, we just can't get to that because we don't have enough resource. Maybe we need to instruct the city manager to figure out a way. And if that means looking at vacant, even more vacant positions throughout the, throughout the city government, if that means extraordinary measures, finding the resources locally to be able to actually address what underlies what the council members brought forward. And at the same time, and at the same time, challenge all of you again, as Councilmember Vang did, and as I kind of half, you know, I kept doing this because I ain't doing this again in this way. But if we're serious about this, and it's going to take a long time, as you say, Councilmember Lolo, we'd actually build more housing, you got two choices. We either lease more motels now and actually provide space for people, we get more trailers, and/or we allow safe ground. You can't complain, and I say this to everybody, those frustr, those stakeholders in the community and members here about the situation here and about why isn't Measure O going faster? Because Measure O in parts depends on us creating more capacity. That's what it does. Unless and until we collectively come forward with more places to allow either tents temporarily, trailers, and/or we lease more hotel or motel rooms so that we can bring people indoors. That's it. Hezekiah and all these guys, Mario Lara is doing a great job leading a real effort here. Mario, I want to thank you. You really are. But you can't, this is not magic here. We're all back to the same thing. We go round and round on this. The same discussion is what led to the comprehensive siding plan. So we need more. And yet, we need more from the county, and that's why this question about, well, is an FSP include housing? I heard today that an FSP, by the way, does include housing. I heard that. And I think that's really, really important. And so if that's the case, then you're in the, you're in the deep end with us to figure out how we, not you alone, together, how we create more temporary housing or shelter or safe ground for folks. And I don't know what philosophically, culturally, county says, we don't want to do safe ground. I'm sorry. We have got to be able to clean up our city. I feel, I hear you, I heard you, Jenna Abbott. I heard you, Jenna Abbott. A good person in this community who's a leader and who, and who works her heart out. There are so many like her. We have to answer her question. More money for compliance? I support it. I'll support what you guys put out there to enforce the sidewalk and these other ordinances. You're darn right, more money. If it takes, if it takes $20 million to clean this city, fine, $20 million. There's nothing more important than this. But at the same time, use that, use the same amount of money to create more beds and more capacity for us with the county. Otherwise, this is going to get better. I think that's the call to action here today. All right? Let's move to the next item. What? Start presenting. Yes, on the next item, on the, on the weather criteria.
Do you want to start, City Manager?
Maybe we'll, we'll get a, this is on the respite item.
Yeah.
Maybe we can have staff present what our current process is and the protocols, and then have you do your presentation.
I think, didn't you already present that at the meeting a couple weeks ago?
I think he was just going to do a quick.
Oh, quick recap, okay. And then.
And then we'll turn it back over to you.
And maybe we'll give you these two.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you so much for your time this afternoon. Just going to do a quick recap of what our current criteria is for weather respite centers. For cold weather, we would be activating under nighttime lows of 37 degrees or lower with two or more days within a five-day span. Or rain for two or more consecutive days with a forecast of 60% or more. Or a day or night of rain combined with nighttime lows of 32 degrees or lower. Our hot weather criteria is with a publication of a National Weather Service heat advisory. An NWS heat advisory is issued within 12 hours of the onset of extremely dangerous heat conditions. The general rule for this advisory is that when the maximum heat index temperature is expected to be 100 degrees or higher for at least two days. And nighttime air temperatures will not drop below 75 degrees. Last little bit here, these criteria are separate and distinct from the State and County Office of Emergency Services severe weather emergency plans, which are monitored by our Office of Emergency Services. Therefore, respite center opening thresholds would be monitored by myself, the Department of Community Response, to guide the opening of the city respite centers. That's where we are now. So DCR remains available to answer questions and feel free to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Let me bring this over to Councilmember Valenzuela regarding her council proposal request.
Yeah, and I will start us off and then pass it over to my colleague, Katie Maple. For members of the public, we made a little slide so you could see the gist of the proposal. And my goodness, what a great segue this was from the conversation we just had. And so I want to start, I'll read briefly the background here just because members of the public can't see what we wrote. At the May 30th, 2023 city council meeting, city staff reported on the status of weather-based respite in Sacramento. Councilmember Valenzuela had asked for that update after the significant storms in January 2023 failed to trigger the existing weather criteria, causing city and county staff to scramble to find options that too few unhoused residents utilized, in part due to the late notification, but in larger part due to the inconsistent resources offered during weather events, which led to the tragic death of unhoused people on the streets during those storms. During the council discussion, staff also reported that Sacramento's only 24/7 respite center, the old Science Center, now called the Outreach and Engagement Center, has served hundreds of unhoused residents and achieved a 46% positive exit rate. This discussion made a compelling case for the city of Sacramento to consider reforms to the respite system, including expanding the weather criteria to capture extreme weather events, standardizing the process for notifying unhoused people of weather respite opportunities, standardizing client rights while at respite centers so people know what to expect, and expanding the 24/7 respite center citywide specifically by adding a Central City and South Sacramento 24/7 location, which was specifically discussed because currently the North Sacramento location is the only one open. So how do we open other options throughout the city so that it's not just in North Sacramento? I will just say briefly that I think the question of cost is really important, and I'm glad that gets brought up regularly. Because I think the data shows that on average, when someone is unhoused on the street, we're spending about $60,000 to $70,000 a year responding to that individual, whether it's through medical emergencies or police response, or through cleanup, or through other services, emergency room burdens, et cetera, that anything we can do to address the immediate crisis of living unhoused and to further stabilize that position is a cost savings as long as it doesn't go over $70,000. Obviously, we want it to be as low as possible, but there is a certain cost associated with just stabilizing folks who are in a really unstable position. I know at the last meeting, the city manager and the team said that for a 100-person 24/7 respite, it would be about $750,000 for the winter. And that was initially what we talked about, but I think we expanded that to say, let's look at two more centers, one in Central and one in South. And that's the comment. And obviously, this isn't an action item today, but the request would be for direction. And I think it's very timely because we're about to enter four days of over 100-degree heat. It's predicted to be 107 degrees on Saturday. Obviously, we can't take action before that. But I think this sort of change would hopefully increase utilization and help standardize the expectations for our city staff when these events occur. So I'll pass that over to Councilmember Maple now, who collaborated with me on this.
Councilmember Maple, any short, any comments?
I think Councilmember Valenzuela did a great job of tying this up, and I'm actually really interested if we have public comment.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Madam Clerk, let's move to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have four speakers so far. Boots is in chambers, and Charles Fost.
Madam Clerk?
I don't see anyone standing up, so we'll go to online.
Oh. There we go. And Madam Clerk, while he's coming, do you mind announcing the following, anyone after that?
I have call-in user two. I have call-in user two, PJ Dylan Hoy Bianchi, then Hugh Jas.
Good afternoon, Charles.
Hi. Sorry, I got lost in the agenda thing. I wanted to actually speak on the last thing, but I can get on this a little bit. So the, I've come a couple of times and talked about different options for respite centers and shelters in some of your guys' locations, and I've not been able to get them to you guys, because I don't know how to properly do that. But when I was on Katie's task force, I found a lot of different options in her district, but also everybody else's district. So if you guys are interested in that, someone come up to me afterward and ask, you know, let me know how I can do that without breaking a law. The other thing, while you guys were talking, I wanted to say is that I think everybody on this council does agree that if we could by tomorrow just fix this and provide beds and shelter to everybody, we would. And I think that's also something that's possible in a way that Sean was kind of alluding to, that we need to co-locate. It might not be 10,000 people in District Eight, but there are options on 3,000, 5,000-bed shelters where we co-locate all services, and we actually can save lives that way. Because the hotel things that are being talked about, they work, especially in temporary options, but the truth is, over time, they kill people. When you look at the statistics out of other cities on the suicide, death, and drug overdose rates in hotel programs, it's abysmal. People die when they get put in hotels and don't have services provided to them. And then lastly, I want to say that the respite centers that we do have going right now, they need clothing. When people come in and it's 105 degrees outside, they sweat through their clothing, and they don't have that there. So I know from some of the programs I've talked to, it's actually plus-size clothing in different weird sizes is what they need. They don't, they need all clothing, but particularly, they have a lot of people coming in that you need, like, you know, like a children's large or an adult's extra, extra-large. So it's not something the city necessarily needs to throw down the money for, but you could definitely let your constituents know, hey, this respite center needs these clothing items, and that'd probably be the better way to handle that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user two.
Yes, this is Lambert, and this is a perfect issue for me. Growing up in Del Paso Heights, we were always allowed, I believe it was seven days a week, to swim in Grant's Pool. And we could walk to the pool, because we lived in Del Paso Heights. Now, here we coming up on 107 degrees, according to City Councilwoman Valenzuela, and the youth in Del Paso Heights, their only option, from what I understand, is to go to Johnson Pool. Well, how do they get there? Do they walk in 107-degree temperature to Strawberry Manor and then walk back? You know? Or they ride their bikes? That's brutal. They should be able to go to Grant Pool. They renovated that pool, and then they did a trick on it and turned it into an Olympic pool. I was there last weekend, some family members and I, we saw a whole bunch of people in that pool, and they were all white. And they were swimming in the pool, and I went in there and asked them, what is this? What is this event? They said it was a polo, water polo tournament. And I said, well, where'd the people come from? They didn't know who I was. And they said, all over the city. So now you got all over the city coming to Grant's Pool, and there were no police in the parking lot. You mean to tell me there's no criminals amongst white people? They were all in the pool, and I said, wow, our youth can't even swim there, and we're winning state championships, city championships, and the grand drum line just landed in Europe a week ago. Look into that, Mr. Lulow, that should be remedied. The youth here are going to suffer because of that 107 degrees.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ.
Yeah, so I don't know the full details of the proposed plan, but I would agree that one of the things that needs to be vastly improved is notification. Largely notifications currently go out, sometimes by email, usually by social media. Neither of those is necessarily accessible to people who are unhoused. It would be great if there was some way to actually get a notification system up and going, where folks could get a text message of some sort to limit the, the need to go to individual encampments, but even that would be a much better way to reach out to people, because I, every time that I see someone complaining about the respite centers not being used, it's incredibly frustrating, because it's like, well, people need to know. And often advocates do, do some work to try and get out there, but they have their limitations as well. And when you have people that are literally paid to be able to, to do this stuff, they should be the ones going out to encampments to let people know. And in addition to that, we need transportation. People need transportation to get to places. Majority of unhoused folks don't have transportation, and if they do, it's usually, you know, not reliable transportation. So you end up in a situation where someone may have a lot of survival gear, that they are unable to move from one place to another place. And so it's untenable to ask them to abandon all that, so that they survive one day when they're going to need that stuff to survive the, the following days after that weather event is over. And one of the things that we've found multiple times during sweeps is what happens is, is that when survival gear is taken, it not only impacts the survivability for the remaining unhoused folks, but there is also no plan to store that ever. It's legally required, and the amount of storage space allocated to storing this, this sort of equipment is minuscule. And so we need something more that would also be able to serve the same purpose as when weather events occur, and we need people to actually be able to store their belongings so they're there when they get out afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So first, I want to say that I just echo the sentiment that PJ just, just said that we definitely need better system for notifying people when the respite centers are open. I would also like to say that the, you know, I would hope that the criteria for keeping them open is massively expanded in whatever action is taking place today. The, the current criteria is laughably bad. You know, for one thing, it doesn't include wind, which I believe was brought up at the last meeting, and that was something that killed multiple unhoused people this last winter during those storms. For another thing, because unhoused folks are outside for most of the day, their exposure to the heat is significantly increased from that of, you know, a person who has a house and has a place to be indoors. So you can't wait until it gets to 100 degrees to find a place for them to go inside. They start getting health, adverse health effects much, much sooner, at much lower temperatures. So I would encourage y'all to make changes there and make sure that the criteria that you have reflects, you know, actual best practices that are guided by medical professionals and people who want to make sure that unhoused folks are not suffering needlessly. We're not just trying to prevent death, we're also trying to prevent, or we should be trying to prevent any sort of medical issues or suffering from our, for our unhoused neighbors. And then finally, I would just like to say yet again, you know, there, I think, at least in part, because this meeting was, is happening at the earlier session, there are no unhoused folks here to discuss this item. Was, I, I'd love to know if, I'm sure the answer is no, but I would love to just hear confirmed officially that the city, whether the city made any, any sort of proactive efforts to get unhoused people to the table for these two important discussion items today. I, like I said, I'm sure the answer is no, but if y'all want to address it, please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hugh Jas is our final speaker on this item.
Hi. I just wanted to ask for 30 more seconds. I called earlier, and one of yours, I was outside of City Hall, and one of your security guards came and interrupted me on my phone call, and it cut me a little short. Is there any way I could get a little extra time?
You have 1 minute and 46 seconds. Please proceed.
Great. Well, I just wanted to build off what I was saying earlier. So in reference to DCR and the funding.
This item is about weather respite activation? So if you want to speak on weather respite activation, you may speak.
Okay, well, the weather respite shelters need to be much more humane, and they need to be much more accessible. Like, it doesn't, I, I agree with the last speaker when they were saying, like, 100 degrees should not be the cutoff point for people to be able to access these things. A lot of these shelters also, you know, you're not allowed to bring a pet, you're not allowed to bring even more than one bag, there's a curfew, like, they're, they're very carceral. So when you talk about people not using these things, like, there, there's reasons behind it, like, if, if, if you could only imagine, you know, leaving your pet behind, or only being able to bring one bag with you, like, like, it's just not humane. These, these services that are provided are not humane. And I, I just wanted to speak on DCR, please, if I could, because I was cut off earlier. DCR is, is not able to do what they're due, because they, they're called after the police are called. When I was out on the Garden Highway, the, the police had moved a man in a wheelchair who's disabled, and half of his body, and they moved him, and then only when I was there did they call DCR, and DCR was only able to get him to the emergency room, which put him out with just bus passes. Like, it's, it's not enough.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me bring this over to the city manager, and then I'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to clarify a point that I heard coming back in, Councilmember Valenzuela, that the cost to open potentially two new sites, one in the north area, one in the south area, it's not $750,000 a year. Okay, that, I misheard. So it's about three, a little over $3 million each site. Second point is, there's, we want to expand the weather criteria, or do we want to make these 24/7?
It's both to expand the emergency weather criteria to cover extreme events for when we do our temporary activations, and to add to 24/7 respite centers.
I think maybe I'll, I'll ask the mayor to chime in here, too, because the direction we got from the council was, as we create these 24/7 respite centers, there's no longer a need for weather criteria. And that's the back and forth we've been going.
Well, I think it's, I mean, yeah, if we want to open 100 of these respite centers, then that would be appropriate, but I guess it's, I think there will probably always be some level of need for temporary activation for extreme heat or cold or wind events, like was mentioned. So, I mean, I don't think we're, I mean, that'd be great to get to that point, where there's so few people who are still left out on the street that we don't need weather criteria, but this also impacts housed people as well, because we talk a lot about people who can't afford air conditioning, or who don't have good, you know, home systems to manage extreme events, to be, have a safe place to go during those events. It isn't just an unhoused issue, although those are obviously folks who are most directly impacted.
So you want to have both items come back, both the temperature criteria adjustment and potentially opening two additional sites somewhere in the north area, somewhere in the south area?
Somewhere in the central area and somewhere in the south area.
I'm sorry, central.
Yeah, and, and in addition, the criteria here, which I hope will address some of the concerns that we've heard repeatedly, and to answer one of the questions, I mean, we unfortunately didn't have time to do more stakeholder outreach, but we're hoping this proposal addresses at least what I've heard directly from unhoused residents about why they don't use respite, so that we can try to address those barriers.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is listed as review and provide further comment regarding the proposal. Any further comment regarding the proposal? Mister, Mister Mayor from the District Six seat, the old seat.
The old seat. Well, we have gone back and forth on this over the years. I just want to thank the members for bringing forward, I think, a really solid revision here, especially accounting for extreme weather criteria that isn't always reflected in artificial temperatures. And so thank you. It's good direction.
Well, hold on. Let me pass it over to Councilmember Maple. She may have an answer to that, but then we can talk about the process protocol after that.
Thank you. So I just wanted to build upon something that Councilmember Valenzuela said, and I think about this a lot in the communities that I represent. I represent several very low-income neighborhoods, and definitely a lot of seniors and young people, and a lot of this housing is aging housing stock, including the house that I live in, which was built in the 1940s and has, you know, air conditioning that doesn't always work out when it goes out. And when people don't have expendable income to do these kind of improvements on their properties, you have people who are very at risk when we see temperatures like we're going to see this weekend, and when those happen for an extended period of time. And so I think it's really important that we note, because I recently saw that there, that the governor is putting money in for, I think it's like wildfire smoke shelters, and one, one in here, actually at the Pennell Center, right? Amazing. So it's this acknowledgement that, you know, with climate change, we are going to see more and more events like this, we're going to see more and more, unfortunately, storms like we saw earlier this year that are incredibly damaging, not just to property and trees, but to individuals who are sleeping outside, but also to, you know, our community members that are housed, and, you know, might have their power out for multiple days at a time, which is something that I literally, we all had to deal with. For me, it was in my first few weeks in office, where I was triaging and helping people who, including elderly folks who had power out for three days, and we were delivering care packages with food and water. And so, you know, this is something that, that is, I think, an important, important for all of our communities. And I think it's, it's also important, as Councilmember Valenzuela said, that we have distribution throughout the city. I'm really, really grateful for the partnership that we have with SACRT. I sit, I sit on that board along with many of my colleagues, and they do amazing work to help connect people, to get them to the Outreach Engagement Center. But the problem, there's a lot of problems with it. People aren't connecting easily, and so when we say, hey, that's not full, it's not for lack of people not needing a place to go when it's storming outside, or when it's 105 degrees for multiple days in a row. It's because it's not convenient for reasons that were stated by some of the callers, or might not be practical. And so I think having places that are strategically placed throughout our city is going to help us be better prepared for emergency management, too. Like, forget, you know, the unhoused component, like, for our people to have places to go when there are extreme weather events, which unfortunately, we're going to see more of as we battle climate change. So I just wanted to, to put that out there, and I'm interested to hear the thoughts of my, my colleagues as well on this proposal. Oh, and the goal is to bring back to the, to the full council for.
Yeah, using the urgency provisions of our policy and procedures, the weather criteria in particular, and the standards for respite, so that, since that's going to be used this weekend probably, but also on, on other days as well, in the very soon-to-come weeks. I think the respite center item is, and I actually texted this to the mayor, I'm like, kind of the perfect follow-up to the conversation we just had on item one. I think it would make sense to bring that back to the full council to further discuss. Maybe it's not a decision item, but it's at least a discussion item of where these two sites could be, and whether or not, you know, how we move forward with that. But there wasn't really a select box for come-back-to-council urgency, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At least for, for me, I think a south area, one is critical. Southeast Sacramento is kind of in a, in a unique island, and, and so I think that, that would be appropriate. But in conversation with the city manager, I think what is best here, given our council rules, is for him and the mayor to discuss the, the, the proper path, if the emergency protocol allows us to come back. I mean, at least I'm fine with that, but if not, this is, at least, we're looking at that the city manager was off the cuff, giving a number to it, but it's in the few millions here, so. So budget or not, it might be also a faster route that isn't as log-jammed as the law and legislation log. So, so let's, so I'm going to.
Yes, I just, I just don't want this to, I don't want to lose the urgency of the conversation we just had, though, and, and I think this is what often happens, unfortunately, in government process, is we say, it's urgent, it's urgent, let's act, let's act, and then six months goes by, and then it feels like we're repeating that. And not to say that there isn't progress being made by far, but I, I just don't want us to wait too long, and I don't want us to have, I mean, I think this council probably needs to discuss the respite items, get a specific budget number, really think about, and obviously, that would depend on where it is, what type of building it is, et cetera. But the weather criteria, I just want to make sure that those two are separate. It's like adjusting the weather criteria for extreme events and establishing these expectations.
So what's, the choices were to bring it back to the council quickly, or go through a process?
Yeah, well, there is in our policy procedures a clear urgency measure.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Hold on one moment here. I'm going to ask the council, and if the mayor wants to take the gavel back, that's fine, but I'm going to have to ask the council members to use the.
I'm sorry.
Speaker's list, so that we can manage the conversation.
You're doing great, Vice Mayor.
Sorry.
So if you want to go back, that's fine, but, so, good. So let me, let me, let me have the, the mayor finish his comment.
No, I mean, I think on the weather criteria, given that it's summer, you know, summer is starting, that we should, if there's relative consensus, which I think there is, we should bring this back for action right away. On the budget issue relating to the respite centers, I do think this is part of the discussion we had a few moments ago, where I said, I'm just one, that if we need to spend more money to address both the capacity side and also the compliance side, then I'd like, I'd like that choice, and sort of bring forward with the city manager in due time, I think that's, we have to talk about that, some additional budget options so that we can make greater progress. That could include, you know, that could include a respite option here as well, it could. So that's my suggestion, is to come back right away to the council with the, with the RETH resolution.
Thank you very much. The clerk has just informed me that every Wednesday after the council, they, they meet to discuss how things get agendized in this manner with the city manager. So it seems that that may be an appropriate option. You've heard both from the city manager and the mayor. Councilmember Kaplan?
I, I believe we could probably bring back, that's okay, right away for council, item I believe we could probably bring back, that's okay, right away for council, item number one. I'm pretty sure that's something we can move quickly on. But again, what I was asking, while we need to move with haste, we need to move with what I asked for the city manager, as we look at items two, three, and four, that has to be part of our comprehensive, where are our priorities, and what are the costs with them? I don't want this item to come separately to council, because then we're, again, doing whack-a-mole and hodgepodge. It needs to be part of the bigger discussion of where the priorities are.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Again, this is a provide and comment. I see those members have commented. Any further comment for this item? If not, Madam Clerk, we'll conclude this item. Is there any other items on the agenda?
Vice Mayor, that concludes our agenda for this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much.